Good afternoon. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful nonconforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are conducted in a hybrid, in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, or phone, and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you are called on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelists when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use Share Screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, and specified persons and public bodies are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. With respect to hearing procedure, I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised, to ensure the revised application is accurate, and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we first call on speakers in the hearing room, and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Mr. Secretary Treasurer, do we have any minutes to approve?
Through you, Madam Chair, we do not.
And do we have any declarations of interest from the panel or staff today? Don't see any. And do we have any deferral requests?
Not that I have a record of, Madam Chair.
And no files to close?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. All right, so, welcome to the two P M. session of Committee of Adjustment. We are starting with item fourteen, which is eighty-eight Park Home Avenue. This is an application for a rear deck with a canopy. The variances are for rear deck and front porch, percentage of coverage, number of platforms on rear wall, and area of a platform. On file, we have a survey, plans, an extract of the February twentieth, twenty-fifth C of A. meeting, and a previous agenda package. Are you our applicant at the podium? Hi. Please make sure the microphone's on.
Is it on? Yeah.
I think so. And if you could start with your name and address, please.
Hi, my name's Linda Cara Georges, and I'm at eighty-eight Park Home Avenue. I live in the property that I'm applying for. There is a slide presentation?
Okay. Do you have any changes to make to the application?
No.
Okay. All right. Do we want a presentation, panel? Okay. We may not need a presentation.
Through you, Madam Chair. If the applicant just, because the matter was deferred, if you could just briefly explain what was the reason of the deferral and go over it, that would be helpful.
The Planning Department, so, I initially applied for a sixteen-foot deck, and the Planning Department was against that. So, I reduced the size of the deck, and they sent me an email saying they were okay with that. I had actual letters from my neighbors for both the sixteen and the fifteen-foot deck. Everybody was for, no one was against it, basically.
So now it's a fifteen-foot deck? Is that what you're saying?
Now it's a fifteen-foot.
Thank you. All right, I don't think we need a presentation. Any other questions for the applicant? Unless there's something you want to point out of them?
It's just replacing an existing deck and enlarging it because it needs repair.
So it's the deck in the photo that we have up on the screen?
It's that one. And the floor plan beside it is what was approved in two thousand and eight.
So you're just making it wider? Is that, or is it?
We're bringing it fifteen feet away from the house and making it wider, too. So it's actually a total square footage that's less than the approved decks in the neighborhood that were approved last fall, off this technical second floor, or real first floor but technical second floor.
So the site plan's up now, Ms. Martin?
Yeah. So it's a covered deck.
Yes.
So do you have any intention to, you're not going to close it in or anything?
No. I may put mosquito curtains up. Sorry, mosquito curtains.
All right. I think, I think we've addressed the questions. We'll take this into committee for, unless you have another one?
No, no.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay, let's take it into committee. Anyone have comments, or anyone want to make a motion?
I can make a motion to approve this application for the deck at the amended length of fifteen feet, or four-point-five-seven meters long, with the addition that the applicant, the applicant will not close in this, this area after, after it's built.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have a second here? Ms. Sankar? Thank you. All in favor of the motion? That is unanimous? Your application's been approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That was very easy. All right, item fifteen. Sorry? Yes. Thank you. Okay, next is fifty-two Wigmore Drive, and, one second here. This is an application to alter the existing one-story dwelling by constructing a front extension with a second-floor addition over the garage. We have variance for east sideyard setback, driveway width, percentage of front yard landscaping. On file, we have minutes from the January sixteenth meeting where it was deferred, a survey, plans, presentation, three letters of objection, and a previous agenda package from January sixteenth. Have our applicants.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Leo Mastandrea from eight-one-seven Cosburn Ave., and I'm the agent for the owners at fifty-two Wigmore.
Thank you. And do you have any changes to make to the application today?
Um, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Just, we've just, we deferred it to deal with transportation, and we submitted ten photos of the similar-sized driveways, the adjacent area, including immediate streets, and we listed the addresses on those. So once we submitted those, the transportation was okay with it. So there's no concerns from transportation or planning.
All right, thank you.
And we submitted also six letters of support. And I'd just like to mention that the sideyard setback is existing situation, and the landscaping is only off by one percent.
Okay, thank you. Just for the panel's information, the Transportation Services comments were in the package, but they weren't listed separately, so they're on the screen right now if you want to have a look. So there's just, they don't have an objection, but they have some conditions that they want to attach to it. So we do have a neighbor. So perhaps you could just explain to us, maybe you already did, but address the reason for the deferral, and just give us a very brief presentation on it?
Yeah, so the deferral was initially, transportation had some concerns regarding the width of the driveway only, and so we deferred it to deal with the, to deal with that situation. So what we did was, is we provided photos of similar-sized driveways in the immediate area, and since we did that, they seemed to be in with our proposal. So basically, our proposal was to extend the garage up to the front at a second story above, partial second story above, as per the point. We did canvass the area, and at the time, there was no concerns. So I did notice that these letters of opposition were on AIC, which I was quite surprised since we did canvass the area, and, and there was no initial concerns from the neighbors, and we submitted six letters of support.
All right, thank you. Can we just pull up the elevation drawing for this one? It's the front elev, okay, I see. Thank you.
Yeah, so basically, the addition is, the second-story addition was just above the garage area.
Okay.
And that's where our sideyard setback. But this sideyard setback is existing below.
Got it. Okay. Makes sense. Does anyone have any questions for this applicant at this point? No? All right, let's hear from the neighbor.
Madam Chair, we've unmuted Alina.
Okay, thank you. Hello, Ms. Dusa?
Through you, Madam Chair. Alina needs to approve the request to unmute. She didn't yet.
Oh, okay. She needs to unmute herself? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Don't know if you can hear us, Alina, but you need to unmute yourself so we can hear Hello?
Madam Chair, I just tried to reach Alina at the phone number provided, the nine-five-three phone number, and it went straight to voicemail. Maybe give her a couple of minutes to unmute herself, so we got, we can hear what she has to say.
So Alina, if you can hear me, you need to unmute yourself?
Madam Chair, while we are waiting, I tried calling again, and I did not get an answer. I got the voice message. Do you, if there's any questions you want to ask of the agent, perhaps you want to do it now?
Sure.
We'll see if Alina can unmute herself?
Perhaps we, let's pull up her letter of objection, so we can kind of get the gist of what she had concerns about. I think she's next door, right? Maybe what we could do is, question for the applicant. Have you reviewed Alina Dusa's letter of objection? Perhaps you could address the, the items that are related to the variances? One is overlook and privacy.
I'm not too sure how to address it, because we're doing just a partial second story over one side above the garage. I don't see what kind of impact that would have. We have no, we have no variances regarding the, the height, the size, the length. We comply with everything except sideyard setback.
And I think the sideyard setback?
And we have no windows on that side either.
Oh, okay. It's adjacent to her property. I think that's why she thinks it's a overlook and privacy issue. Shade?
Well, we, we don't have any windows on that side, and we comply with the height.
And maybe you can just speak to construction management on the site, how, you know, I think she's questioning whether there could be impacts to them from noise, or material, or that sort of thing.
Well, construction is construction. I know that we would definitely be working within construction hours. Material will be stored in our own site. We won't be violating any, any construction rules or laws of, of time of being able to do the construction.
All right.
Maybe you can have my, my clients contact her to see if there's additional concerns during the construction process.
Right, okay, thank you. All right, well, I think we've taken a look at the letter, we've given it consideration, and we've got the applicant to address the concerns that are within our purview. I think we can move along to committee. We've given enough time here. Okay, let's take it into committee. Does anyone have any comments or concerns, or, go ahead, Mr. Fazelli?
No. Through you, Madam Chair, I think the application is straightforward. It is supportive, in my opinion. Therefore, I think it satisfies the four tests as well. Therefore, I forward a motion for approval of this application. There are no conditions, I believe. Transportation, yes, I, with a subject to the transportation conditions.
All right. Do we have a second here? Ms. Martin, seconds that. All in favor of the motion? That is unanimous, and your application has been approved. Moving along, item sixteen, thirty-five Melrose Avenue, sorry. This is an application for a two-story rear addition that was deferred from April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. The variances are for west sideyard setback and floor space index. On file, we have a survey, plans, urban forestry conditions, and the previous agenda package from April seventeenth. We have our applicant here.
Yes, I'm here.
Please state your name and address.
Yes, Joseph Mazatelli, six-oh-eight Oriole Parkway, Toronto, Ontario.
And Mr. Mazatelli, do you have any changes to make to the application today?
No, I don't.
All right, thank you. Could you just explain the reason for the deferral? And if anything is changed?
Yes, the deferral was basically due to the initial writing of the zoning variant, there was a delay, and there was a change, a minor change to one of them. We actually had one removed. So it was just a matter of the, the timing for the, of public notice.
All right, thank you. We do have a neighbor, I believe, oh, sir, that is the owner, you're right. So we don't have any neighbors. All right. Do we need a presentation? Does anyone want a presentation? I don't think so. Unless there's something you want to point out to us, we don't need a presentation.
No, I just want to say that it's a simple addition, and we hope that you support it.
All right, thank you. Any questions? No? Should we take it into committee? All right.
I'm happy to make a motion to approve this application, subject to forestry condition two. I think it meets the four tests and is reasonable, and there doesn't seem to be any opposition to it.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Fazelli, seconds that. All in favor of the motion? That is unanimous. Your application has been approved. All right, number seventeen, one forty-five Rosewell Avenue. This is an application to construct a second-story addition to the rear of the existing dwelling. We have variances for floor space index and rear yard setback. On file, we have a survey, plans, tree photos. Do we have our applicant?
Yes, hi, I'm Angus Keane. I'm the architect and agent for the proposal.
Thank you. I don't think we have anybody here, correct? No, there's nobody here. All right. Any changes to make to the application?
No, none.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Or do we want a presentation? Just questions? Okay, just have a couple few questions.
Through you, Madam Chair, yes. If, if the applicant could elaborate on the reasoning for the variance number two that they're asking for?
For variance number two, is that the rear yard?
Yes.
That is correct.
Correct. I think what's important about these properties, there's a little clutch of properties, they're very small, they're wide, but they're short. So if you look at the site plan, if you want to bring up the site plan, it's quite a, I think it's a twenty-two-meter-long lot, which, in terms of imperials, is about seventy-two feet, so that's a little less than a normal Toronto lot. So the existing house, as it sits, is already in contravention of the rear yard setback, the required seven-point-five. So in this case, the area that's being occupied by the proposed second-floor addition right now is a little second-floor deck, and they want to put a bathroom there, but it's just by the time you build exterior walls, and the walls have a thickness, it's just not quite big enough. So we're, we're cantilevering the new addition over by about three feet towards the rear yard. So the original house is already in contravention, so we're bringing it into more contravention with our, with our proposal. By about, I think I did some calculations, just under six feet, just about one-point-eight meters is how much it's contravening the rear yard. Does that clarify what's happening with the proposal?
Yes, thank you so much.
Any other questions? No? All right. I guess we can take this into committee, then? Yeah, we're in committee. Yep.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, thanks for the explanation, just for the purpose of clarification of the variances. I'd like to forward a motion for approval of this application. I don't see any conditions there. I think it satisfies the four tests. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Second here, Ms. Sankar. All right, all in favor of the motion? That is unanimous. Your application's been approved.
Thank you very much.
All right, item eighteen, twenty Chatfield Drive. This is an application for a new two-story detached dwelling. Sorry, I just lost my notes. One moment, okay. Sorry, new two-story dwelling, detached dwelling with an attached garage, variances for main, east, and west sideyard wall, sorry, main and, main, east and west side wall height, and lock coverage. On file, we have a survey, site plan, plans, Arborist Report, Tree Protection Plan, a community planning report, and a letter of concern from eighteen Chatfield Drive. We have our applicant.
Oh, hi.
Hello? Name and address, please?
Yeah, hi, my name's Sheng Shu Zhang, architect. Location is nineteen-eight Scarsdale Road.
Thank you.
And, yeah, for the proposed single-family detached house, we have three variances. The first two actually are the same issue, the side, the main wall height. We discussed with the staff, the proposed with the staff, uh, proposed, the original proposed, the main wall height is eight point twenty-one meters. We have reduced the, to seven point nine meters for both. And then that's the third, uh, varies above the coverage, no change. And we have also reviewed that letter from the neighbor at the eighteen Chatfield. Uh, I talked to both Tom and the classary yesterday and then we explained about, uh, setbacks, tree protection, driveways, location of trees, and also the construction management. And, uh, they both are very nice, uh, senior carver. Uh, yeah, quite happy with what we changed. We also promised that to provide, uh, that protection to me through their carport. Uh, that's what I can explain to you. Thank you.
Okay. Is that the letter of concern? That, uh, what address was that?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't get their address on, oh, yes, I did. Eighteen Chatfield. Okay. And so just to clarify, variances one and two, you've revised
Yes.
the proposed west hall, west wall tight height. Sorry, I'm having trouble talking today. Um, from, uh, eight point two one to seven point nine and the, uh, sorry, that was the west side main wall and then the east side main wall, variance two, same number from eight point two one to seven point nine meters, correct?
Yeah, correct, madam.
And the variance number three remains the same, the coverage?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, because I thought I only heard variance one. I wasn't sure if I heard variance.
I know. It's kind of hard to understand. Um, okay. So do we need more of a explanation or presentation? No, I don't think so. All right. So any other questions for the applicant at this point? No? All right. Um, so we'll take this into committee to make a decision. All right. Anybody want to go ahead?
Through you, Madam Chair, um, I'm okay to forward a motion for this application. Um, I believe after the revision, it, it makes the supportive application and, uh, it's aligned with the four tests. Uh, therefore, I forward a motion to approve this application as amended. Do we, do I need to read the variances again?
Do you need the, are you okay with the variances now? Just one and two?
One and two. Yes, correct. Variance number one and variance number two, they both changed to
Seven point nine.
seven point, uh, nine meters. And, uh, there are no other conditions.
All right. Do we have a second here? Mr. Kibou? Did you, oh, sorry. Probably saw your hand. I'm imagining. All right. Um, Mr. Kibou. All right. Um, all those in favor of the application or the motion? That is unanimous. Your application has been approved. Okay, item nineteen, sixty-seven Elmhurst Avenue. All right, one moment. Um.
I'm Chair and members of the committee.
Okay, hold on one sec. Sixty-seven Elmhurst Avenue is to construct a new two-and-a-half story dwelling. We have variances for number of stories and building length. On file, we have a survey, plans, the applicant's photographs, community planning report, urban forestry conditions, urban forestry advisory memo, and two letters of objection from fifty-four Harlandale Avenue. Do we have the applicant first?
I'm not the
Thank you. I'm Chair. Um, my name is Sean Tucci. I'm the principal architect at Remar Architects Inc. For the record, the address is twenty-three twenty-three Youngest Street, Unit five oh three, Toronto, M four P two C nine. Um, Madam Chair, we have submitted a sort of a presentation that I would like to ask if the staff can bring it up so I can use it.
Sure.
So while, while the staff is bringing it up, um, so the two letter of objection as well as the planning staff concerns are around the two variances out of three variances we submit. So the building length is only fourteen centimeter, which I believe many would agree that it is very minor. So I will focus my presentation on the two other variances, which is the three-story house as well as the issue of the lot coverage. Um, if we could go to, if we could go to the next page. So these are the photos. There should be another documents that we submitted that is a sort of a combination of drawings and sketches. It's a presentation. Uh, the file name, uh, so the file is P R E, is marked P R E, is, um, I can't see it here. That's all that's here. I would, that's a question, I guess, for staff. We submitted on May eighth.
Give us a sec.
Yeah, thank you. And because we're sort of collared to clarify, it would be a very important part of this presentation. Yeah, at the same time, was it, it was submitted with a justification letter if it helps the staff to work with.
And it's from
On May eighth.
Who is it? Is it from your office?
My office. Yes. Uh, Lucy is the name of my staff that sent the information. L U C Y.
Okay, we're just looking for that. Give us a sec.
Awesome. And maybe while we're waiting for the staff to find out, I'll just give a background of the story of this application. So our clients are, um, two older senior, um, husband and wife, that they're in their eighties. And, um, since few months back, the gentleman, uh, is in need of wheelchair and the current house doesn't really accommodate it. So that's really what triggers this project. We started working on where they want to be close to their kids that are also living in, in the same neighborhood. And, uh, because of that, we had to design a house that is fully accessible with wheelchair and give them access, uh, to different part of the house and living there, which would include the corridors, adding elevators, wider spaces, as well as a ramp for the entry to the house. Um, they basically want to retire, you know, graceful retirement with their kids and with their, you know, grandkids around them. And, um, one of the variances, uh, which is the, uh, lot coverage is a result of that. And that's the part that it would be great if the staff were able to find that presentation because it would make it a lot easier. I don't know if the staff had any luck. And one recommendation, Madam Chair, I, I could make is that if the staff were unable to find it, um, we could email them a stand down of this application and hear it maybe like after the next one or whatever you see fit.
I'm gonna let the staff comment on that.
Madam, Madam Chair, can I just, can you just ask the applicant through you who he sent that to?
Do you recall who it was sent to? No, it's from Lucy.
Uh, the email we send it to is, um, uh, C O A N, N Y, C O A dot N Y at Toronto dot C A. And Emily, also we send it to Emily Greco, Emily dot Greco, if I'm saying it right, at Toronto dot C A.
Thank you.
We send it to Emily Greco as well as C O A dot N Y at Toronto dot C A. On, uh, May eighth, around two forty-five P M, if that helps, seven days ago.
Yeah. So while we're waiting for staff to confirm whether they can find that or not, um, would you like to comment on the planning staff report? Oh, they found it. Hallelujah.
There you go. Absolutely. So the staff report as well as the neighbor letters, they're both on the, uh, lot coverage and the three-story aspect. So the first, um, file, which you see now in front of you, yeah, perfect. Thank you so much. So the house itself, the part that is purple, which is basically the first floor and the second floor, is thirty-two point sixty-two. Um, the way the zoning have calculated initially, they agreed that the entire object property in the proposal is thirty-two point sixty-two. And then in future application, they changed their sort of, um, position and they said that the side, as you can see, there is a ramp, right? The green, um, the green area, I don't know if the staff can help me with pointing to it. So the green is staff that says accessible ramp, getting into that side accessibility deck, which has a, um, same level as the ground floor access, um, is causing an extra three point three eight. That red area, which adds the, the number and takes it to thirty-six, is only two feet from the ground. And, um, it is required because the deck at the backyard is not the same level as the entry. Really, that becomes the only area that the gentleman will be able to basically enjoy outdoor, um, on, on his own and the other ones need somebody to assist them or it's very hard for the wife to take them out. Um, so that, um, is causing that extra three point three eight. Otherwise, the main house is thirty-two point six, thirty-two point sixty-two. And if we compare that to the neighboring property, they received an approval of thirty-three percent lot coverage. But if you look at the house, this is a very good drawing. The house on the south of the drawing, number sixty-five, it was approved for lot coverage of thirty-two. So we are achieving this lot coverage with complying with all the setbacks. If you look at it, the other neighboring property, which both have been through committee of adjustment and they both have been receiving approval, they're requested a one point six setback where we are complying with the one point eight. There is no front yard setback, there is no side yard setback, there is no rear yard setback. Um, and the only, um, the only really dimension that, that affects the massing is that fourteen centimeter building length that we're requesting, which we're not going behind it. That surface, the, the red surface, which is sort of causing the lot coverage to go up, to go higher, um, is basically only two feet. So it doesn't have any privacy issue, is lower than the, um, it is the same level as the deck in the backyard. It doesn't have any privacy issue and it is four meter. That wall is four meter from the side yard setback. So that's really for the lot coverage. Obviously, with their age, um, this is really a necessity for them, uh, to, to build this house. So, um, if the committee, it's really we're at the hand of committee. We think this thirty-six percent is a very good example of why the committee of adjustment exists because they see each project independently and in one project thirty-six percent may not be much and one project maybe thirty, thirty-one percent is a lot. And we think in this case, this is a very good example of how thirty-six percent, uh, would seem spare and not, not impact the four tests. And the last thing is really three-story. So in this image, the house on the left is basically the neighboring property number sixty-five Elmhurst and the house on the right is the subject property. So if you look at it, I would argue the house on the left looked more three-story than our pro- proposal. We intentionally didn't put any dormers, anything at the front to, uh, signify the appearance of the two-story. But really, whether this variance get approved or not, the look of the house will absolutely not change. Because whether behind that, um, the roof and space, the attic level, we have a living space or it's just a bunch of, bunch of trusses, it would make, if we could go back to the, to the previous, uh, slides, it makes really absolutely no difference. And because of that, um, we are not asking for even main wall height, we're not asking for the total height and the third story is completely inside the attic and, uh, we're absolutely fine if should the committee decides to approve the application to tie it, uh, to the drawings to make sure that this is how it's going to look like when it's built, as well as, you know, the footprint is going to be as we proposed today. With that, if there is any question, I would be happy to answer.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Anyone? Did you have discussions with the community planning staff regarding this?
Yes, yeah, we did. We did discuss it and their point really was that their position is that really the matter of the number of thirty-six, they, they seems to be that they want to leave it up to the committee of, the committee of staff, um, and committee members to, to decide where it is. Um, but their point was that that's what the committee of adjustment exists. You guys bring it in and, and, you know, they will, they will decide. But again, like if you look at the massing, the building is only, uh, thirty-two point six, is less than what has been approved in the neighborhood. It's less than what the neighboring property is.
Yeah, the, the, the problem is that they're recommending refusal of the lot coverage. So, and the number of stories. So it's not like they're just leaving it up to us. They're, they're actually recommending that we, um, refuse the application. But, um, all right. Go ahead.
Um, through you, Madam Chair, thank you. Um, thanks for the applicant for the explanation. I want to ask this question back for the applicant. What do you think, um, if we were, for example, to approve this application, how would this, um, look like in terms of the impact within the neighborhood? Um, thinking of, if there are applications comes with such request of a thirty-six percent of a lot coverage. Um, I want to, I want your analysis on the adverse impact on this.
Um, through you, Madam Chair, um, so I, I've been doing this, uh, for twenty-five years now. And, um, the way I would say committee has always looked at the application on their own merits. So, um, and the purpose the committee is there is that really the, the sort of blanket zoning bylaw sometimes creates these specific situations that, um, on the paper, things look off. Uh, but you look at the design, if you look at how it's presented, if you look at the purpose, um, you will see that it is not, it doesn't have the adverse effect. So there are two question here. One is that, oh, we're going to see a thirty-six percent approval. How's it going to affect in some of the precedent? I think it is very clear from all these meetings, twenty-five years I've been, that the precedent does not set anything for the committee members or for any applicant to rely on. Every application is, is reviewed separately. I don't think it will impact numerically to have that number approved today. Then the question becomes, what is the actual effect in terms of the four tests? And the actual effect is thirty-two point sixty-two. That area, the red area you see in the side plan, is, is only two feet above the ground. It's like, like a rear deck. And, um, it is just really technical number. It is what, the way the zoning read, read it. And even on the first review, they excluded it. On the second review, the examiner said, well, my manager said we should include it, you know, and, and, and that's really what existed. So I think, um, in terms of numeric nor in terms of the impact, this mass is, you know, extensive beyond what has been built. And as a result, I don't think it is affecting the, any of the four tests because of that.
All right. Thank you.
Have we exhausted the questions for the applicant at this point? All right, let's hear from the neighbors now, please. Would you like to come forward? That's fine. Oh, you can, oh, okay. Whoever wants to come up and speak? So you have to come up So you have to come up to the podium, please, and make sure the microphone is on?
Okay, I'm speaking for Stephen Pollak, who lives on the property currently, at sixty-seven Elmhurst.
Thank you.
My name is Stephen Pollak, North York, I live at sixty-seven, Elmer Seven, North York, for the past sixteen years. During this time, I have actively contributed to fostering a safe and pleasant neighborhood and have supported my neighbors and seniors in our community. I'm writing to formally oppose the proposed minor variance application to construct a new two-and-a-half-story, single-family detached dwelling at property, at our, at sixty-seven Elmhurst. After consulting with neighbors, and it is our collective, collective opinion that the requested height and design are not in keeping with existing neighborhood standards. Specifically, we believe that the proposed variance will significantly increase the building height beyond permitted limits, thereby disrupting the visual, visual harmony of the street. Number two, cause detrimental reduction in sunlight exposure for neighboring properties, impacting their enjoyment and privacy. Number three, alter the character and aesthetic integrity of our neighborhood, diminishing its appeal and value. We respectfully request that the city deny this variance application to preserve the, preserve the existing neighborhood standards, sunlight access, and overall, overall community well-being. And we have ten signatures, if you want to.
We have ten signatures, and I also have my neighbor from across the street that would like to speak too. That's okay?
Were the, were the signatures submitted with your letter?
Yes.
No, but were they submitted to the city?
Oh, I didn't know I had to do that. I just found out about this two weeks ago when they put a sign in my yard. Sign's been vandalized.
You have to come up to the podium, sir. Well, you can, I think unless anyone has any questions of the resident? Yeah, he lives in the house.
By the way, I have two Huskies, mother and daughter, that everybody loves, and they've loved them for the past ten years. So everybody comes by and feeds them, and everybody's like, all my friends. So everybody's really upset that this is happening. And I've never been warned, nobody told me anything, I've never gotten any eviction notice, nothing. So my landlord just pulled this rabbit out of his hat.
All right, thank you.
And this is my good friend Dominic Massey, lives right across the street from me, and has been my good friend for sixteen years. Thank you very much for your time and.
Thank you.
And I'm also on disability, just to let you know.
Oh, we know that. Okay, sorry for that, but.
That's okay.
There's a proper way of doing this, and there's a wrong way of doing this.
Name and address.
I've, mine, my address is seventy-two Elmhurst Avenue. I own the property with my parents, I built it on my, by myself. I took the city of North York to the O M B with a municipal lawyer. We're not opposed to certain building regulations. What I'm opposed to that is, it's a two-unit dwelling, first of all. It's a, it's going to be a, two separate units. And I really have no variance, no problem, someone's saying they've been doing it for twenty-five years. My major concerns are is the overcrowding, and they're, just the design and the way the house is going to be built. He can remove that ramp, and he could use access through and from the house. Certain things are just not allowed. And I think that because of the delay, there should be better choices that the applicant should make. Because by the time, he's using all the sympathy and empathy of, you know, elderly people, and I support that, old age homes, we've helped them. I've helped build them, I used to be a master home builder. But by saying that it needs the coverage because of this, this, that, and the elevator, that house is not going to be built for three years. The next-door neighbor took three years to build that house, okay? Thirty years ago, was building seven to ten million-dollar homes. They can flap out of there whatever they want and say whatever they want, but I know what it takes. So by the time this house will be finished, this is not being used, will not be able to be used by the people, because could be and couldn't be, but don't use that as an excuse. That should be removed. Second of all, the way he came by, like I had to do twenty-eight years ago, I went to all the neighbors, and I had three homes on that street. I built sixty-eight, sorry, seventy and seventy-two, back in those days. I knew how it was supposed to be built. He should have came by like me and my ex-wife did, asked the neighbors what we're doing. No, they're coming here going, oh, this is what we're doing. They're trying to get Steve out of that house because of this. That's nor here or there, but it's not being done properly, and it's not being done with the accordance. Now, I found out about this three days ago. Our mail wasn't coming to us, the sign's been vandalized. You know what I mean? My mail goes to my house and also to another property. My mother got it not even five days ago. My neighbors know nothing about it. You don't look at your neighbor's front lawn and see a sign that's been painted over. So with all due respect, I think, give it further consideration. And I'm not telling, sorry, I'm not telling you what to do, but give it further consideration. Have a, like a board meeting. I was on, I helped John Philly and the counselor look at things. Here he's saying, basically he's going to use this for the reason that he wants to evict him to build the house. Then he's not going to get the permit to build the house. And that's what I'm opposed of, you know what I mean? And, but also the design of the house, the lot coverage, it has nothing to do with the sunlight and that, that's, that's BS, sorry to say like that. But I think it's the way the house is being built, and maybe perhaps it's a two-family dwelling, and that's what I oppose. They say father and son, and family lives together, it's not.
Thank you. Just to confirm your name, I don't think.
Dominic, D O M I N I C, M A S C I.
Thank you.
On title of the house is Julio and Antoinette Massey, with the same surname. I also had bought sixty-eight, and I know what I went through to the committee, two, three times, and the O M B downtown. Certain things are just, have to be done a proper way.
All right.
It has nothing to do, sorry, I started to interrupt. It has nothing to do with A did and B did, and he did this, and I, no, no. You're on your own, he could tell me all the experience he has, they're going to run into a lot of problems with that house.
Right.
More than they know.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
I don't think so at this point, no, anyone?
All right, when will we all be getting notices?
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
What makes you think it's going to be a multifamily house?
They all, sorry ma'am, they all are, they turn into them. I know what they do.
Okay.
I, I could tell you if you want, I don't mind, I got nothing to hide. Mine, just me and my girlfriend live in it, you know what I mean? They put a devising wall downstairs, and they make two separate dwellings in it. Then it brings more people to the area. Next door, sorry, seventy-one did not do it, they lived all as a family, I helped them finish that house. The experience that they have and the needs and the wants that they think they have to have are not, not justified. They think they are, but they're not, and a lot of them aren't able to achieve that. And then what they do is they close it off, and you got two different families living in there. There's a house right next door to it, it's an eight-room rooming house. And the only reason why it doesn't get shut down or questioned is because the counselor gets eight votes from that house. Right? So fifteen, twenty-eight years ago, cost me twelve thousand dollars in one day.
Sorry, Madam Chair.
For municipal lawyer.
I don't understand the relevance of this.
It's, it's a lot of relevance, because what was done in the past isn't being shown now. So if you want to talk about the house turning into a two-story.
This is a lot of speculation.
No, it's not speculation, it'll happen, trust me.
Okay, so, thank you for your comments.
No problem.
We'll bring the applicant back.
Great.
To address the, the comments that have been raised by the residents.
No, 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 not you, Steve.
So through, through you, Madam Chair, I will divide the concerns into two categories. One, from a gentleman that introduced himself as a Steve, which I believe is the current tenant of the house. And they've been there for sixteen years, and I understand they don't want to leave. But this meeting is not a tenant and landlord act board to decide on tenant and landlord issues. And the owner owns the house, and they're in a situation that they need their house. And, but again, I don't think it is even relevant to, to today's meeting. So I leave it at that, unless you would like me, or any of the members would like me to comment on it more. And then the second gentleman's, seems to be their main concern, is this house to be a two-unit, which is not. If, you know, I'm sure any of you have looked at the drawings, the whole elevator, the design of the ramp, like, everything there, like, you know, and the width of corridors, accommodations for barrier-free, like, everything really shouts about what the purpose is. And the official submission also is a single-family home. So if at any time in future, this wants to be turned out by anyone into anything else other than a single-family home, the city, there has to be an application submitted, it will, it will, may or may not generate variances. But again, that is not subject of the discussion today. What we are today reviewing are three specific variances in front of the members. And it seems both of the neighbors' concern is not related to any of those three variances. One concern is that it is going to be two units, which again, is not the subject of today's discussion. And the other one is that they've been there for sixteen years and they don't want to leave, which is again, not related to the today's meeting. Respectfully, Madam Chair, I believe none of the concerns that the neighbors mentioned are relevant to the today's meeting, and they have a different time and place to be brought up. And for that reason, we think the mass of the building is smaller than the neighboring property, immediate neighboring property that has been approved, was approved for thirty-three percent, this is thirty-two point six. And the third story, whether it is there or not, it is not going to change, change the, the look of the house, is not going to change the massing of the house, is not going to change anything. And for that reason, we think these meet the four tests, and we respectfully request approval.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions of the applicant? No? Just one question, the residents mentioned that the sign had been damaged. Are you aware of anything?
Yes, Madam Chair, we put the sign up, my office actually put the sign up. The tenant literally removed the sign the moment that it was, it was put up. Then the owner, the landlord, reached out to the tenant, Mr. Steve, that was here today, and he explained to him the consequences of he removing the, the, the sign again. So he agreed to keep the sign there. So we put it back again, the owner's team put it back again, and they standing there to see it. And apparently, Steve, the tenant, they saw it with their own eyes, that he came out with a spray paint and painting. I don't know how, how is the extent of damage to the sign, but he came out and sprayed the sign, they saw it. So that's really all I was told. And I think regardless, the sign was put there, we think we're in a full compliance with what the, what the COA Committee of Adjustment Act requires. And, and still, everybody received the letters too.
Okay, thank you very much, I just wanted to clarify that. All right, no other questions for the applicant?
Through you, Madam Chair, I just want to clarify about this number of stories. There are, how many of such situations within your neighborhood that they have like a, that have been granted for like a third of stories?
If we could bring that presentation again. Unfortunately, through you, Madam Chair, I don't have an answer for Mr. Fosley on this. But if you look at the last drawing, the one that is a front elevation. So this is the proposal, and what I would recommend, if the, like, this, I think we all agree, that looks like it's a story house, right? It doesn't have any window opening at the front, and our main wall height can be seven and a half, it is seven point two, so we're even lower. And the total height is not going, going more. And even neighbors that submitted a letter, they don't have issue with the third of story, there's just about lot coverage. What I would like to recommend, should the committee decide to approve, it would be a suggestion to tie to the elevation, tie to the site plan, in general, tie to the drawings, to make sure what is built is exactly what this drawing is showing in front of you today. If they're feeling that this is a two-story drawing, the design is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, is really behind that roof, I, I think that justifies, you know, that, again, that, that third of story not being there, this house is going to look exactly same way. Not going to look even a, even a, like a, like an inch different, right? And the only thing is that if you get approved and then we change the design, I can totally understand that concern. And that could be solved by tying the decision to the drawings, which would address, you know, any abuse of the lot coverage issue in future, or any abuse of the third floor approval. Any changes from the drawings, that would means, you know, it has to come back in front of you. Obviously, at that time, you can make the appropriate decision. But my recommendation would be to tie the decision to the drawings, to address any, let's put it this way, address any misuse of the potential approvals today.
Thank you. All right. Any further questions? Sorry, sir, you've had your time to speak, we're now.
You just accused me of doing something that I didn't do, and that's definitely.
It's, the committee's just taking in the information, we'll make a decision, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? I think we've exhausted the questions. All right, let's take it into committee. Thoughts, comments? Ms. Sankar?
I guess I have a comment.
Sorry, Ms. Martin, Ms. Sankar's had her hand up, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, through you, Madam Chair, if you could hear me clearly. You know, we had an earlier application with similar details, as well as someone who was also disabled. And we went ahead and we approved that. And while we don't treat everything the same, I, I think we have to look at consistency in how we sort of make decisions. And looking at this, I'm thinking to myself, okay, I do pay attention quite a bit to what staff has to say. But in this regard, given the actual situation of two elderly people, that they are not making a multi-unit, it's clear from the, the, the designs. And, and going through the zoning and the technical details as to why this is the way it is, and comparing it also with the home next door, which looks physically a lot larger and looks like a three-story versus what this one looks like, whether it's, it's a two or a three, it looks like a two-story, you know? And knowing that it's minimal numbers of, you know, variances, as well as the fact that they kept within the setbacks for all areas of the house, I just feel like, you know, and, and then just to hear the neighbors talk, and not one is really addressing any of the variances, but really just got me a little upset to hear that they say this person may not like live or pass, you know, three years of. That, that just really set me in a different direction that I feel like this person or this stuff is being ganged up upon, and I shouldn't, I shouldn't talk to that because we have to stick to the variances. But nothing that I have seen in these variances makes me worried, even with a staff report, based on the explanations that this agent had said. And I feel if we had already, earlier in this morning, approved something for people with a disability with an extra level, and this one is nowhere in comparison to the extremity of that one, I don't have a problem with this application at all. That's my view.
Thank you very much for your comments. I will just say, I, I agree with what you've said, Ms. Sankar. And I think the applicant's suggestion of tying it to the site plan and the elevation drawings is a really good idea, because that way, the coverage, for instance, although it would be on record of being the higher percentage, if anyone looked at it, it would be tied to the site plan, and the actual building itself is not covering that much of the, of the property. But the variances to me are pretty minor. What is being requested is, is minor relative to what we see on a regular basis. I think for this neighborhood, it's consistent, and I generally don't have any concerns either. Does somebody, Ms. Sankar, are you willing to make a motion? Your hand's still up, I'm just.
For sure. Oh, sorry, I forgot to take.
That's okay.
Forgive my voice, everybody. So yeah, so with the explanations that have been provided by the agent here today, I feel certain and I understand where they're coming from with this property. And with respect to, I understood where staff is coming from, from a, looking at it on paper, but when. but when you hear the explanations to everything, I feel within reason that this does meet the four tests in my eyes. And so with that, I'll put forward a motion to approve this application and make it, uh, subject to forestry.
And do we have a, uh, and tie, are you agreeable to tying it to the site plan and elevation drawings?
Sorry, I meant to add that as well, to tie it to the site plan so that they stick to what they've designed.
And the elevation, I would say all the elevation?
And the elevation.
Okay.
Yes.
All. Yeah. Okay, do we have a seconder? Ms. Martin, seconds it. All in favor of the motion? That is unanimous, the application's been approved. Thank you.
All right, so I'm allowed to get kicked out of my house for sixteen years without even being told anything? Which is really cool. Okay, I'm gonna pick the elevator up. Very cool. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Item twenty.
My major concern was, no one on the street received notice, nobody did. And they're all upset at that. Now, if he would've came out like I had to do, that was my major concern. But, it is what it is.
All right, item twenty, six sixty-nine Millwood Road. This is an application to enclose the existing front porch. Uh, so it's a variance for front yard setback. On file, we have a survey and plans. Do we have our agent online?
I'm Andrew Novak, I'm the owner of the property.
Oh, thank you. And just for the record, could you please state your name and address?
Yep, Andrew Novak, owner at six sixty-nine Millwood Road.
Thank you very much. Um, I think it's a very straightforward application. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant or want a presentation? Okay, so we don't need a presentation. Um, I think we can probably just take this into committee for consideration, unless there's something you want to point out.
No, I don't have anything in particular to point out unless there's any specific questions.
No, I don't think so. All right, we're in committee.
I'm happy to make a motion.
Go ahead, Ms. Martin.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this application, uh, to six sixty-nine Millwood Road. I don't believe there's any conditions. No.
All right, and Mr. Fazeli seconds that? Thank you. All in favor? That is unanimous, your application has been approved.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. So, that concludes our, uh, two PM session. We will reconvene at four PM.
All right, good afternoon. We are back for the 4:00 PM agenda. Number one on our agenda today is item 21, 18 Highmount Drive. And this is an application for a two-story dwelling. We have variances for driveway width, rear deck projection, exterior stair units above grade, percentage of front yard landscaping, block coverage, building height, exterior main wall height, area of second-story balcony, exterior stair width, and east side yard setback. On file, we have a survey, plans, community planning report, a ravine and natural protection memo, TRCA comments, and one letter of objection from 16 Highmount Drive. Do we have our applicant with us? Please come forward and state your name and address. Just make sure the microphone is on. You need to talk a little more.
Is it on now?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Member of Committees. I'm representing the owner for this application. It's a custom house for herself and the family. And we're going through 11 variances for this developer.
Could you state your name and address first?
Babak Nakash, AD3 Galaxy Boulevard, Unit 13, Etobicoke, Ontario.
Thank you. All right. I think we probably need a presentation, a brief presentation on this one.
Yep, I'm gonna do quickly through the variances. The variance number one would be the driveway width. The boiler is six meter. We're looking for 6.47. The driveway is kind of curved design. And some point of this driveway has 6.4... His whole driveway is not 6.47. It's just part of that. The second variance is the rear deck at the back because of the grading and the way the side is, is lower than the front. So the main floor, the deck would be above the grate. So, and the setbacks, like the size of the deck is 3.6 meter versus the boiler allows 2.5 meter. It's just a matter of topographical issue we have on the job site. So we are, we are on the same levels as the main floor. The third variance would be the size, the size of the front porch, which is wider than the boiler allows. We are not looking for the fourth variances. So it's been deleted. So the house will set back.
I should have started by asking you if any changes to the variances, and I think you do.
Yes.
So let's, let's just bring up the public meeting notice again. Well, it's in front of us now. And just go through the changes you have. So the first variance for front yard landscaping.
So the first variance we have is driveway on my paperwork for the public hearing notice. So that's a stay. If you have the old ones, which is the front setback, we are eliminating that variance.
Okay.
We are working with the planning department, and we delete the front setback.
Okay, hold on one sec. I'm just a bit confused because I have the planning staff report says eliminate variance one for the front yard landscaping, but variance one is the driveway width.
Yeah, it's been deleted to the first number two become variance number one now on this public notice.
Oh, it's already, it wasn't in the notice.
No, it's not in this here.
Okay, got you.
So various number four is related to that setback of the front landscaping, so we don't need that one. We have enough landscaping.
So variance four here is eliminated that we see?
Correct.
Do we get that staff? Variance four? Well, it was variance one, I guess originally, but it's not on the public meeting notice. It was already eliminated.
Yeah. We are looking for...
So when staff are referring to eliminate variance one, that was already not included in the, in the notice.
That's correct.
Don't ask me.
Yeah. It's a bit confusing, yes.
Okay, sorry. So Madam Chair, if we could reset and only use the variance number from the public notice to indicate the change is made.
All right.
Yes.
So we'll just go back to the public notice. And there's no change to variance one, two, three, four, five.
Four is been deleted.
Four, the one for front yard landscaping?
Yes, we are, because of the setback on the previous variance number one, we increased this front yard setback. So we are meeting this landscaping, landscaping. So we don't need number four.
So we're eliminating variance four?
Correct.
That's the first one on the public notice to be eliminated. Okay, five?
Five, we're looking for the additional 2% coverage versus the boiler allows 30%.
Six?
And the six would be the height of the building. We work with the planning department. So they have, we have their support for 10.25 meter. We adding for 0.25 meter, which is about 10-inch height.
So variance five is being modified...
Modified from 10.8 to 10.25.
Sorry, six?
Six, yeah, six would be modified from 10.8 to 10.25 to have the support of the planning department.
All right, thank you. And then...
And the variance number seven stays the height of the wall on the side is 8.8, 18 meter versus boiler is 7.15, 7.5, sorry.
Okay.
That's a stays. The eighth and ninth is for the front and rear balconies. We are exceeding the area on the balconies. On the front, we exceeding like by four meter and the rear by eight meter. And we are, the owner is willing to put the privacy screens on either side for the neighboring.
Okay, but they are staying the same.
Sorry?
The variances for...
Yes, stays, there's stays, yes. Variance number 10, we have a shopping list here. Yes, number 10 is the front porch is four-point stair, is 4.9 meter wide because of shape of the front porch and the shape of the stair going inside the house. It stays. Variance number 11 is a side yard setbacks, 1.8 meter versus 2.4 meter stays. So we're looking to, we're seeking the committee for these variances.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Madam Chair, just if I could quickly summarize. I've, I heard two changes. Variance four is deleted. And variance six is now 10.25.
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct.
All right, let's go back to the, your explanation then for, for the variances that you have remaining.
Yes, so I went through all the variances. If you have any questions, yeah, I can explain you further.
Does anyone have any questions? No? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. So what are the intentions of the large balconies off the second story, the rear balcony and the front balcony? What are the intentions for people to gather out on the balconies? Because they're quite large.
Basically, yes, correct. Basically, if you look at the elevation of the house is just a cultural thing. So like the way they like the design, they're building the house for themselves. So the, basically culture is going back to Greece. And they, this is a typical style of the Greek design. So they want to have bigger balcony. It's not a gathering thing. It's not something, but the look of the house. They want to have this element of the structure in their design. So their family, they want to have this, this design. So that's, it's not for gathering and partying. No, correct, it's not. And they intend to put privacy screen on the either side of the balconies. So it doesn't overlook the neighbors. Even though the neighbors recently built a new house and is projecting to the back of the, like, the new house won't project through that neighbor property.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions? No? All right, let's take it into committee then. But there's nobody here. No.
If, I think if we look at the letter of opposition, there was, there not some talk on worrying about privacy from the, the, yeah, the decks overlooking...
The backyard one.
The backyard. The front is not as much of an issue, I guess, but the backyard, upper deck, upper platform. If, if it's not intended for gathering, which it shouldn't be, I'm not sure it needs to be that wide or that, that deep, you know? And I think that could encourage people to gather up there. I don't know. Like if you have a...
So on the second, okay, let's just, can we just pull up the elevation drawings? You see the front platform, the second?
The second is five feet, five feet, five inches.
The rear elevation, sorry.
The rear elevation.
Oh, I see.
The second floor is project out five feet, five inches off of the building.
And that balcony is just like off of a hall?
Off of the master bedroom. So it's not from public area going out.
I don't think it's...
It's off a big hallway.
Yeah, big hallway, correct.
The bedroom, isn't it?
No, it's off a hallway, not a bedroom.
So we're putting the privacy either side of this.
Sorry?
The, as planning department proposed, like to put a privacy screen either side of this balcony.
I think...
So we don't overlook the neighbor. But...
Planning's only asking for it on the front balcony, the screening.
I don't know how...
But we could require it on the back.
It looks deeper than five feet.
It's on the, on the page eight, if you go to page eight, 2.3, on the drawing, it give you the dimension of the balcony off of the hallway. It's not a place of gathering, it's just five feet of the balcony. Just, yeah.
I can't see the...
Yeah.
Yeah, I have that, but it doesn't show five feet.
Yeah, the dimensions there.
It's five feet, five inches to the outside of the finished balcony.
Where do you see that? I don't see it.
It's right up there on the, on the drawing. They've got staff have it up on the screen. See the dimension?
Oh, okay, yeah, 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 sorry, sorry.
It's okay.
Yes, yes.
Right. Any other questions for the applicant? Right.
I just want to add something. The, the house, which has a letter of objection, like this house, once it's built, is probably 10 to 15 feet is in. The other house... The other house is setback, so we cannot overlook the, 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 the backyards.
All right, thank you. All right, should we take it into committee? Yes? Okay. Any other comments people want to make? Yeah, yeah.
Um, through you, Madam Chair, I'm, thank you. So I, I think the application with the amendments that have made by the applicant is supportive. So I'd like to forward a motion for approval of this application as amended. Um, the changes are removal of variance number four and variance number six has been changed to ten point two five. I'd like to tie this motion for approval to the recommendation with the staff report where it mentions the applicant is to provide permanent or back screening or fencing along the east and west sides of the second story front platform balcony with a minimum height of one point five meters from the deck floor. I'd like to add that for the rear side as well, on the, on the balcony.
For the same amount?
For the same amount, yes.
So i- in addition to the condition in the staff report, um, Mr. Fazelli's adding, um, the requirement for the same, the same requirement, the opaque screening or fencing, um, on the east and west sides of the, um, second story rear platform balcony?
I think the applicant was okay with that.
With the minimum height of one point five.
Okay, so the staff, so the staff report mentions the front?
Yeah.
And then you want the same thing on the rear?
Correct.
The rear platform?
Yes.
Yes.
For the balcony.
And then there's a ravine?
There are forestry conditions? It's all forestry?
Yeah, we, we have, there's a, we have their approval of CRCA.
And the condition from ravine and natural feature protection memo? It's a condition of number one.
Number one, which says condition of urban forestry?
I'm, I'm, yes. It's not created, I think, yes. Condition.
That's standard, so I don't, we don't put a condition on.
No. So that's the motion.
That's your motion, do we have a seconder? Mr. Kibu seconds that, all in favor of the motion? That is unanimous, your application's been approved, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do I need to tear it off or leave it there?
Sure. Okay, we are on to item twenty-two, one ninety-eight York Mills Road. This is an application to construct a new detached dwelling with a rear deck. Uh, we have variances for rear deck projection, height of west exterior main wall, height of east exterior main wall, west and east side yard setbacks, height of main pedestrian entrance and exterior stair width. On file, we have a survey, plans, west elevation, photos, a community planning report and three letters of objection from one nineteen, one twenty-one and one twenty-five Monroe Boulevard. Do we have our applicant?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and the committee members. Ali Tana from Ali Design, um, located at thirty-three seventeen Young Street.
Thank you. Uh, before we start, do you have any changes to make to the application?
No.
And you're okay with the condition of the community planning report regarding the?
Yes.
Great, thank you. All right, we do have a number of people to, uh, speak to this item, so if you could provide us with a brief presentation?
Yeah, for sure. Um, to make it efficient, I think I would skip some unnecessary explanations and, uh, as I know the objections, I would prefer to respond to the questions. I have prepared a presentation file regarding the rear deck, which is most, uh, mostly the, uh, concern of the neighbors on the, on Monroe Boulevard in the back. Um, the house is located on York Mills Road, which is a major street, so we have here the design towards that kind of feeling of a major street. So we feel that the design is very proper to the, uh, this aspect of this street and it's not a within a neighborhood house, as per say. I think the staff is, um, planning staff is in support because most of the elements we have in the design are pretty common in new developments and it's part of the prevailing character of a lot of the new homes we design. Uh, the, I would add that the height of the sidewalls, uh, are more than what the bylaw allows, but it's not for the full length of the building and it's only in the front and in the back where we have the return of the, uh, main wall of the front and the re- Um, the setbacks, um, on the west side is one point five and it's flat, but on the, uh, east side where we have reduced the setback, it's only for the garage and also then we have a jog design, so it increases to one point five meters and also one point eight meters, which is what the bylaw requires. So we have tried to create a balance between the two sides and, uh, keep the design away from the trees. And we're not, uh, doing anything with the trees, they're all being protected. The rear deck is being pushed to the middle of the lot to further increase the privacy for the neighbors. Um, I have some explanations for the deck. I would probably leave it to, uh, hear the objections and then I can explain more on the deck. Thank you.
Thank you very much, any questions of the applicant at this point? Wait. Yeah.
One quick question for the applicant first. Yeah, uh, Mr., uh, yeah, what is his name? Yeah, Mr. Turner, I saw that you focused mostly on the, on the replying to, um, the, um, position from the neighbors. I was wondering how, to what extent you were able to speak with these neighbors to alleviate some of these concerns? You or your client?
Um, I've, mm-hmm. Um, one of the neighbors reached out to me and I spoke to them. The, uh, neighbor on two hundred, uh, York Mills Road and I think they spoke to me on behalf of, uh, themselves and also they brought, uh, up some, uh, concerns from one ninety-six. And I, um, responded to all the questions and, and I've gave them all the information they were and process, so I think it was satisfactory to them, what I, what I said. The neighbors in the back, I personally haven't spoken to. I'm not sure if, um, the owners have had the chance to. I have seen the letter of objections, you didn't, because I didn't get the chance and nobody, uh, spoke to me, so I haven't. But, uh, when I looked at the reasoning for the deck, I think the deck issue would be very minor and when I put explanation, I think it would, uh, even satisfy the neighbor's explanation I will give.
Thank you. Any other questions, Ms. Martin? Did you have a question or no, you're good? Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on to the residents. So I think we have some residents in the audience today for this item. I don't know how you have organized yourselves, but if you'd like to come up and speak at the microphone, please? Start with your name and address. And if there are a number of you speaking, if you could, uh, not repeat the same concerns if someone's already mentioned it, um, just add new information regarding the variances, please. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the committee. My name is Harish Abichandani and I live on two hundred York Mills Road. And yes, I was able to speak to the, Ali Designs and get some explanations. I've lived, uh, or we have lived in that house for what, thirty-two years? And in the last thirty-two years, we have not had a fence between our two properties because our neighbors were so friendly. Somehow over time, the property is sold twice and right now it's a mess and, you know, I've complained for the last four years to the city to, you know, never gets cleaned up. So our concern is a monster houses being built next door, which will basically make our property look like a dwarf. And of course, it's going to devalue the value of our property too. The biggest concern is the height. The current height of our house is, we are, we are basically both the one ninety-eight and two hundred York Mills are twin houses, basically they were made for two brothers. Interior, exterior, the whole construction is exactly the same. But the elevation of one ninety-eight is five feet higher than my house. And now we are building another thirty foot or forty foot higher property, which is basically going to block all the daylight and the sunlight that we get. And that's the only side we get some sunlight during winters and summers. And it keeps our house not only warm, it helps, you know, melt the ice, ice and the snow on the roof. And, you know, we don't, we don't even use heaters because the, you know, it brings so much warmth. So now it's going to add up to our cost of heating and everything else. And, uh, of course, the other thing I noticed was I was informed that there's going to be a, a walk-in basement, which to me entails that in future there could be a rental apartment, which is going to increase the traffic, the walk-in and walk-out from there. And the other concern is, which I think most of the neighbors would address the same is the, the raised deck in the, in the, at the rear of the property, or the rear of the house. You know, the, the, the raised deck is basically going to overlook my roof because I'm already down there and everybody else's backyards and bedrooms and washrooms and whatever. So the property has been vacant for at least four or five years and, you know, never maintained. So the other concern is, what are the timelines, if any, for doing the construction? Because we don't want the property to start demolition and then leave it for years. Like, we see a lot of properties driving down Bayview that for ten years they've been fenced and just accumulating, uh, you know, sitting as dump yards. And, you know, the other concern I have is like, how, how is my property going to be protected during construction and everything? So, you know, that's something of a big concern I have because, uh, you know, we haven't, we haven't met the, we don't see who owns the house. We, you know, we've never seen anybody around that house there. And finally, if whatever pushes through, if I want to tear down my house and build a large home, another monster house, side by side, will the committee approve it? That's it from me, thank you.
Thank you very much, any questions for the resident? Mr. Kibu?
Yes, sir.
Hi.
The, the applicant said earlier that they spoke with you and you confirmed. So regarding the variances that they applied for here, which ones are the main, uh, the, the, the main concernings for you?
I don't know, I'm not a technical person, so the variance is really the, you know, so what, what, what my concern is the height of the house because it's basically going to be a lot higher than my house and it's going to basically overshadow my house. So that is the biggest concern.
And, and did you convey that message to the, to the agent when you had opportunity to speak with them?
Sorry?
Did you pass on the message?
Yes, I did mention the height was too high and, uh, you know, that's something. And also I'd like to put on record, I know when I applied for the, you know, when I sent in my request for attendance, I had put, I do not oppose, I'd like to change that to oppose, please.
Okay, thank you.
Because I didn't have enough details then, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next?
Hello, um, my name is Sheikh Farida Sheikh. I live in the back of the property, one twenty-three Monroe Boulevard. This is something new for me, I've never attended this thing. So when I look at this property, it looks like a three-story property to me. And our house is much lower, we have two and a basement and this property looks like a three-story property. And, um, if you see from the back, I think, yeah. And then, uh, on top of it, they're going to build a second-story balcony or patio, no, balcony, I think. So that is going to be really encroaching in our, privacy in our backyard. And that's my concern, you know? Anything else to say?
Yeah, my, my name is Wajid Sheikh, we live in the, also in one twenty-three Monroe Boulevard. I just want to add one thing and don't repeat the same thing. That one should consider the topography of this land there. The, the land slopes from, from west to east on one side and from south to north on the other side. And i- if we take into consideration this height and the height of the deck as well as the height of the building certainly gets exaggerated, although it may fit into the bylaws that you may already have or exist. And I think that should be taken into consideration, you know? Okay, that's all I wanted to add.
No, it, it looks like a very big house compared to what houses we have on this side. And that's a concern and, again, I'm repeating that the balcony is going to be really encroaching our privacy.
Yes.
From there, I'm sure the other people behind them too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And he's owner, I'm helper. So probably he speaks in Chinese and then I translated to English.
Okay, could you start with his name and address, please?
各位下午好，我是一百二十一号Monroe Boulevard的owner.
One twenty-one York Mill, is, 是有没有很?
Um, Monroe.
Monroe.
Monroe Boulevard.
Okay.
His backyard is right?
Behind?
In the back, behind the, the new building.
Thank you.
Has been here for more than ten years. He like environment very much. The view from his house is very good and he like it. The building and, uh, by looking at the, the plan and he feel a few concern here? The height, the first one is the height of the new building is much higher than the permitted maximum height.
我们的一
Thirty percent, almost. Very strong objection to build such higher and he suggests to follow the government permitted maximum, which is the seven point five meters. Yeah, if, if this proposed and the plan is pushed and forward, then he, his, his sight and his view will be blocked by the new building.
因为
That's not good. The length is already higher than his land. So even on top of the higher land, he built higher building, then he feel pressure. So the new height will definitely and affect his the privacy and also comfortability. The second point is the raised deck, real deck, raised the real deck, is raised. Because of the length is already difference higher, different higher, so he raised the deck. Then it like he felt the privacy be, cannot be the, the protected. So if this house is going to be built and as consequence of the, is such and higher and wider and he may think to leave this community because his original and the side view and comfort, comfortability being damaged. So if he leave this community, he will feel a big loss because he has established friendship between himself and the neighbors, so he love the neighbors, he don't want this happen. He expect his opinion can be accepted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? I have one question. If we look, pull up the photos, staff. There's, I think the first one I can see. I assume that's his house in the, in the background? The one in the back?
Yeah, 这，这个是你的房子吧?
No.
Oh, no?
No.
That's not Oh, okay, sorry, I thought when I looked at the location map, that was the one twenty, one twenty-one, no?
你是
One twenty-one.
He's one twenty-one.
One twenty-one Monroe.
Looking at the photo, that looks like the back, my point was that there appear to be like evergreen hedge of some sort in the backyard.
Can, can you repeat?
There appears to be an evergreen, cedars or an evergreen hedge in the backyard of that dwelling. Not, not the subject property, the one on Monroe, is the one I'm talking about.
Yeah, yes, cedar, cedar tree.
Cedar, cedar tree and is it cedar tree?
Cedar tree?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I plant.
Okay, thank you, that's, I just wanted to clarify. Okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any more speakers? On this? No? Do we have anyone online? Sorry? No? Okay. All right, let's bring the applicant back.
Yes, um, thank you. Can I have the file for presentation on, please? It's just a brief. Yes, this one, if he stay on the side plan. So firstly, I have to say I understand the concern of all the neighbors and these new homes going in, especially if you're living in a bungalow, like two hundred or one ninety-six, these homes look like a tap, house. I would like to mention that the overall height of this house is not beyond what the bylaw is allowing, so they're not going, they're actually, I think, lower than ten meters. They have your nine something nine, very close to ten meters, but we are not asking for any overall height increase. And, um, variances for height regarding the design and the height of main wall, not the overall height of the building. Also, the orientation of this house, as we see on the side plan and the north arrow, the house is north-south orientation. So this house is not gonna block the two hundred or one ninety-six sun, south sun, because they're facing south and we are not going further forward from there. But this house is not gonna affect their sun, which is basically from south. And also, if you look at the distance of the house from the back, the, the, the new proposal, the, we are, first, firstly, we are not asking for any length more than what we are allowed by the bylaw. We are below that, but the house itself is almost forty-six feet from the back of property. And the deck has thirty-seven feet to the back of the property. So it's not, to me, it's not close at all. I understand there is a slope from the, from York Mills Road to Monroe Boulevard, which is the natural shape of the land and we can't do anything with it. And it causes the deck, although it is on the main floor, be a little bit higher than if the land was flat. But that's how the land is. But given the distance, the back of the property, and it's a very deep property, I would assume this is a lot better than any other option. Also, if we can zoom in on that side plan, I would add that the deck that is as a variance on this application is actually less than two point five meters from the rear wall of the house that I've highlighted there. So it is less than two point five, which the bylaw allows. The only issue was because the rear wall of the house had that recessed part on the west side. The zoning examiner has considered the depths to be three meters, over three meters because of just that part that was in the back. So the deck is not really projecting even into the backyard that much. And it's within the regulations, basically, if one just consider the reality of it. And it's, it's on the main floor, the main floor is a little bit raised, but that's with a lot of new development types. One, we had the concern, so the overall height, which I addressed, I believe, second floor balcony, we don't have any variances for that and you, you're allowed to have four meters of second floor balcony. So we, and we have that and yes, it caused, it might cause a little bit of privacy issues, but that's for all homes. Our new homes might have that kind of privacy issues. We have enclosed it to decrease the amount of privacy issue, but in general, it's what can be done in terms of new development, so it's not within that variances, but I just give that. So on this elevation, we are showing the deck that is shown in red. And as you can see, it's further pushed with inside the properties not to cause even to minimize the privacy issue for the neighbor on one ninety-six. So we could technically go up to the side main wall, but we pushed it back to decrease that. But in terms of the neighbors on Monroe Boulevard, we can't do much. And I believe the deck is as minimal as it can be for a new house. Overall, I think this should address the concern. I don't think the privacy matter is gonna be more than what a typical house would cause. But I understand the point of view of the bungalow, this is a tall house, but it's a two-story house, basically, as the bylaw is defining. I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. One is, do you have any objection to providing privacy screening on that deck? On the, I believe the neighbors on Monroe are concerned, so that would be the north side, is that right?
Not, not at all.
And
That would typically happen, yeah.
I mean, I don't know how my colleagues feel, but maybe, okay, we could talk about that, but the other question was the neighbor next door was asking about fencing. Do you know whether the owner intends to fence the property on the side yard?
Um, I, yeah, I explained to them that fencing is not really under control. And even whether or not we put it on the drawings or we present it, they can put the fence later on. So it's not really in control of the designer of the house. But I explained to them, if they are opposed to have a fence, the owner would have to put the fence within their property, they can't go on the property line. I kind of gave them this advice, that it's their right to have that.
Yeah, I thought they were asking whether, I think they wanted a fence in between the property. So that was, I was just clarifying that. I know it's not something that we can require. Those are my questions for now. Does anyone else have questions? Go ahead, Ms. Martin.
I have questions, but I'm not sure if it's for my colleagues or for the applicant. So I'm trying to understand the rear and front elevations and the height. Because if I look at your measurements, you're taking the height from what you call the established grade, which is actually above a good portion of the house, let's say on the rear, the rear elevation. It's, it's above the established grade at the rear. So I'm trying to understand how you came at that point to measure your ultimate height elevation. And if that was something that was missed or should you have extended your height down to that point? You know, it looks like there's obviously a slope down from the high point and that's where you took what you're calling an established elevation. But the house is actually higher than that for half of it.
I can explain that if possible. Established grade is the, it comes from the survey, we don't control that. It's the average point of the grade at the front yard on the neighboring properties. So we don't have control over that and it comes from the neighboring property. In, in the back, it is a little bit higher than the, maybe a part of the house because the natural slope of the lot is towards the back. So we have a almost one point five meter slope from the front of the property to the back of the property. So established grade that is considered from the front and that defines the height of the building, in the back is gonna feel like it's a little bit higher than the grade because we have the slope in the back.
Right, but the house is much more imposing. For half of the house, it's probably more like, I would say probably more like, oh, it could be twelve meters.
Oh.
Yeah, from
I don't
That finished grade to the top of the roof. So I don't know, maybe somebody can help me out here. Am I missing something here or what?
I think it's
There is no.
It's the calculation because they're using the front yard.
But it doesn't make sense to me. So, you know, like the houses is, if you took a measurement from the finished grade of the bottom of the house in the rear up to the top of the roof, you're looking at a lot more than what they've noted as nine point nine.
Oh, I see what you mean, but I believe it's measured from established grade, not finished grade. I agree, it's confusing and it makes the house look taller. Well, it's partly because of the slope, right?
I mean, it's, it's not, it's, it's, okay, well, I won't, obviously, I'm not gonna argue how it's measured.
Okay.
Because that's how it's measured, I guess.
Did you have any other questions, Ms. Martin?
Well, so, I mean, than any of these where on the side elevations, you've just got a portion that is above the seven point five and then it comes down. So I guess that's sort of the argument on the side elevations.
Yes. Yeah, it's kind of
Of the, the side wall.
Can I add just one point in general? And that's the fact that this house is located on York Mills Road. It's a major street, the way streetscape is addressed on this major road is totally different from, for instance, Monroe Boulevard. So, um, I think, to me, the reason even, we are not going beyond ten meters in general, based on the bylaw, but in general, the look of the house kind of tailored towards being on York Mills Road and the speed of the cars or bigger lines, a little bit maybe more imposing than it might, what it would be on Monroe Boulevard. So that was the reasoning behind the design while like the variances are big because the height is measured as by law. That is the height, we don't control that.
All right, any other questions for the applicant? No? All right. I think we can take this into committee. Sorry, you've already had an opportunity to speak. We're now taking it into committee to, sorry. Comments? And I believe in response to your questions, Ms. Martin, that's why planning staff were asking that the variance two and three, which are the side wall heights, I believe, be tied to the west and east side exterior elevations. I think that's what they were getting at, if I could suppose that, presuppose that. I mean, it's obviously a big change for the neighborhood because there aren't that many new houses on York Mills, but and yes, it's a major street in the, in response to the applicant, but you're still fitting into a neighborhood and, and the, you know, the houses on Monroe Boulevard are characteristic of that whole neighborhood north of York Mills, so. Yeah. However, it is a very deep lot and personally, I think the variances are relatively minor. I think the side exterior main walls are the biggest. And I believe that the balcony in the rear will sit fairly high and I understand the privacy concern. So I think that opaque screening should be required for those, for that balcony. I don't think it would have a negative impact on anybody to be opaque on, on the north and possibly the east and west side.
I think definitely I think definitely on the west side for sure, and the north.
I mean, if we're going to do the west and the north, I'd say do the east as well because even if the person, yeah.
Yeah.
So otherwise, that's, those are my comments. Anyone else want to make comments or make a motion?
Mrs. Chair, just a comment for now. Based on all what you've had so far and the, the application, the variance seems minor, and I definitely understand the concerns of the neighbors, which are very genuine. But at the end of the day, I think we are here to look at the variances and to best, I think, a modern comfortable with this application assistance.
Would you like to follow up with a motion in that regard?
Let me try and put together something. So based on the, 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 the application, I would like to make a motion for us. I feel this application is quite reasonable, and then the variances are, made, the, the application made the four tests, and I would like to make a motion for us to approve this application, subject, subject to the conditions of the, to the memo from the, from the staff, from the staff report, and yeah.
And the opaque screening of the rear deck?
I don't think I have a big issue with the rear deck.
What I? So you don't think?
Oh, I do.
We, we can work something out around the rear deck. So maybe, maybe I can make the first part of the motion, and then somebody completed it, so that, yeah.
I think one person has to make a motion.
Anyway, so, I, I, as I said, I don't have, I, I, they, they could put a screen on the rear deck to, to, to give some, some privacy at this point, and yeah, that would be my, my, my suggestion. Both, both sides, yeah, both sides, yeah.
Three sides.
East and west, yeah. Not east and west, yeah.
Um, we should probably specify the height for?
Yes, I definitely specify the height.
And generally, we say one and a half meters from the floor?
Yes.
Can you start that one all, all over again, please?
The whole motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, sure.
So yes, as I said, the application seems to meet all the four tests, and the variances are quite minor, and I would like to put forward a motion to approve it, subject to, including the deck on, with scan on all the north, east, and west side of the, the deck, and then the condition, the, the report, the condition on the report from the staff, from the staff report, variances, so let me just get that there.
Just to clarify, for staff, opaque screening on the north, east, and west sides of the rear deck to a height of one point five minimum
meters.
From the floor, yes, meters, yes. And the conditions in the planning report, or, yeah. Okay. Do we have a seconder? Thank you, Mr. Fazeli. All in favor? That is unanimous, the application has been approved? Conditionally. All right. Okay. Item twenty-three, twenty-four Rolf Road. This is an application to construct a new deck and a two-story rear addition to the existing house. The variances for a parking space in the front yard, building length, coverage, front porch side yard setback, roof eve projection into north side yard, south side yard setback. On file, we have a survey, plans, supporting material, three form letters of support from sixteen, thirty-four, and forty Rolf Road. Do we have our applicant?
Yes, good afternoon, welcome to committee members. My name is Sabal Muthnu from QBS Architects. My address is fourteen Crofton Road, and I am the applicant.
Thank you. And do you have any changes to make to the application today?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We do have a neighbor, I believe, online, so if you could make a very brief presentation on the application, please?
Absolutely. So we are here before you, as you mentioned, proposing a side and a rear yard setback, variance we have for this application. We are proposing an addition. Some of the variances are pre-existing, some of the variances, like the parking, for example, because we are proposing to demolish the garage at the back and propose the side addition that provides easier day-to-day in and out for the very busy growing family, to create the side door and mudroom. We are trying to keep the same architecture that Lee Sal is proud of, and I am one of the insiders as well. So we kept the architecture to the Lee Sideway. We have seven minor variances, they are extremely minor in nature. We have a small, for example, the building length variance, which before you hear, it's only happening at the cantilever of the second floor, as you can see. I spoke with the neighbor to the right this morning. His concern was the evs variance. This, and I assured him, this variance is actually a pre-existing condition because the proposed addition will be flush and in line with the existing main walls of the house. So there will be no worsening condition. We have, as you mentioned, we have three letters of support. The owners went door to door to the three year anniversary package and to explain to them the proposal, and I'll be more than happy to answer any specific questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? No? One sec, I don't think I do either. All right. Do we have the resident, Matthew Schumka?
Yes, good afternoon, Chair and Committee as well.
Yes.
Good afternoon. Okay, so, is there a video capability? I'm just looking for a video on button. I don't mind that there's not, it's just in my life of Zoom meetings these days, I've never had trouble turning video on before.
I know. I, I believe we read that, that it is permitted, but we don't normally do it.
Okay.
Is an issue staff, or they can get it? Oh, he can
You can start your
Yeah, there's something asking you if you want to appear on video?
Yeah, I, I don't mind appearing on video, I just wasn't sure what the, the procedure was. So I'm, I'm content to appear just by audio or video, whatever suits.
And while we're doing this, for the record, could you just state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Matthew Schumka, S H U M K A, and I am the owner of twenty-eight Rolf Road, which despite the numbering, is actually the immediate property to the north.
Madam Chair, he can, the speaker can put himself on video now.
Apparently, you can put yourself on video if you'd like to.
The time to be alive, thank you. There we are. Thank you.
There you are.
Thank you. Thank you. So I, I just wanted to address the committee to indicate, I had registered, not as opposing the variances, but just wishing to express some concerns, and candidly, I indicated at the outset, having heard, spoken to my neighbor just a day or two ago, and having heard from the architect, my concerns with respect to the eve variations have been attenuated in that the way it reads, it sounds as if it's going to be a rather significant encroachment of the eves in terms of the property line, but looking at the plans in conjunction and having that kind of clarified for me, it's the existing house line on the north side. So I do, I did have some concerns just about the extension of eves and overflow in terms of drainage, and particularly ice damming that we all experience in the winter, just resulting in water perhaps kind of falling and creeping to our house, but I've expressed those concerns to our neighbor. I just, I'll maintain my position, I'm not opposed, but didn't want to leave the committee wondering where I was, given that I registered to attend. So thank you for your consideration.
All right, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? No? All right, we'll take this into committee.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. I'm, I'm happy to forward a motion for approval. I think the neighbor is satisfied with the explanation of the applicant, and the applicant explained thoroughly about the variances and how they can be supported. So therefore, I forward a motion for approval of this application. It meets the four tests, there are no conditions, and that is my motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have a seconder? Ms. Martin, thank you. All in favor of the motion? That is unanimous, your application has been approved. All right. Item twenty-four, eighteen Southgate Avenue. This is an application for a front addition porch and permeable driveway. We have variances for front yard setback, driveway width, east side yard setback, encroachment of front porch into front yard, front porch canopy encroachment, and exterior stair width. On file, we have a survey, previous decisions from twenty thirteen and twenty nineteen, a cover letter, plans, email revisions, site plan from May first, revised plans May fifth, a tree plan, photos, and a community planning report. Do we have our applicants?
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee. My name is Barry Goldman. I am the applicant for this project. My address is three two one Carla Avenue, Toronto, Ontario. I can make a brief presentation if you'd like. I should go through the variances just to make sure, because they were changing a little bit, and I want to make sure we got them correct.
All right.
There is no, please go ahead.
Let's start with the public meeting notice, and we'll just go through it one by one, and you can let us know if there's any changes to the variances.
Excellent. So
So variance one?
Variance number one? Oh, you go, I go?
You go.
Okay, sorry. Okay, variance number one, four point zero nine, unchanged. Variance number two, five point two meters, unchanged. Variance number three, setback, point nine one meters, unchanged. Variance four, improved from three point three five meters to two point nine meters. The remaining variances are unchanged.
All right, thank you. All right. Southgate, we don't have anybody on this item, there's no one in the audience here for this item, is there? Okay. Do we want a presentation? No, or do we have any questions for the applicant? I'm thinking we don't need a presentation, we may have some questions. Go ahead.
I'm ready to answer questions.
Through you, Madam Chair, thank you. If, if the applicant just elaborate a bit about variance number two, that would be great, thanks.
Variance number two driveway. So the existing garage is too narrow for the, for passengers to open their doors, or basically unload children, groceries, normal life stuff. So what winds up happening is currently children and groceries and strollers and so on are loaded from the driveway, even though the car is parked in the garage. And the existing driveway is so narrow that you're obliged to stand on the grass while we're doing this. So effectively, what we're seeking to do here is to add a walkway. And really, that was the back and forth on that variance, because we were hoping we could improve it by showing this, a portion of it is walkway, but the zoning examiner explained if it's a continuous surface, it's all considered driveway. So again, we're really just proposing a small addition in order that you can stand on a paved surface while you put your kids into the car.
Thank you so much.
Any further questions? No? Community planning?
I will add, there is no landscape variance for this, and if you look at the site plan, you can see there's quite a bit of soft scape, so no one really had an issue, and we are using permeable pavers.
Okay. And you're okay with the community planning condition about developing in accordance with the site plan drawing?
Yes, happy to abide.
Okay, thank you. Anything further?
No.
Okay. We'll take this into committee then.
I'm happy to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this application, subject to variance number four being changed to two point nine meters, and to the condition that this be built, was there a condition?
The building side yard and front yard shall be developed. It doesn't say substantially in accordance, but I will add that in. Substantially in accordance with the site plan drawing, submitted to the committee on May fifth.
Okay, so the building
Staff report.
Side yard and front yard be built substantially in accordance with the site plan drawing?
I would think that
Subject to May fifth.
Sorry, can I just amend it slightly and say the driveway as well? Let's say the side yard and front yard, maybe they include the driveway in that, but I'm just going to add it in an abundance of caution.
So that the, the, the development, the project be developed in, developed in accordance with substantially developed in accordance with the site plan, side, front, and driveway.
I think staff have got that? Yeah? Thank you.
I second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Fazeli. All in favor? That's unanimous, the application has been approved. All right. Item twenty-five, ninety Glenlong Avenue. This is an application for a new dwelling. We have variances for east side yard setback, side platform encroachment into west side yard, vehicle access to a parking space, west side yard setback, building length, platform encroachment into side yard, main wall height, canopy encroachment into setback, and building depth. On file, we have a survey, a revised list of variances, revised plans, superseded plans, Arborist Report, tree protection plan, and a community planning report. Do we have our applicant?
Hello, good afternoon, Madam Chair and Committee members. My name is Eddie Perez. I'm at five thirty-seven Rogers Road. And we have a couple revisions. Item number two, got changed from one point zero four to one point eight four from the west lot line.
And sorry
And then item number
Sorry, Mr. Perez, there's no change to variance number one, correct?
No variance.
There's no change to one, there's only, there's change to number two.
Yep.
Which is, instead of one point zero four, it's one point eight four.
Okay.
To the what? Number three, no change. Number four, no change. Number five, no change. Number six, no change. Number seven, the encroachment from one point nine six, the solid lot line got changed to one point one eight. And then there's no other changes to the, the rest of the variances.
Okay.
I can run them all by, yeah, so the length and the depth variances is, is there because of the cold room is excavated. If the cold room was un-escavated, it wouldn't be a variance for either one, so it's very minor, that's one that's, and then the height is And then the height itself. We're only a centimeter over the, what you required is 7.5. We're at 7.62, which is also very minor. And all the, and then the other one is 1.8 instead of 1.37. That's for the side yard setback. And at the front, we comply with half the house, where it's a corner lot. And then the other half, we're asking for a variance, which is 2.02. So, in my estimation, I feel that this is very minor in nature and needs to force us. And I'm okay with the planning department's comments.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? No? All right, let's take it into committee.
If there are no comments from the colleagues?
One comment.
Sorry, just before you take a... Can I just confirm that the change in variance two, the one, sorry, variance seven, the 1.18 replaces 1.96?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just one comment. The variance for building length and depth is for the concrete porch, but we want to make sure that it's not just a blanket building depth and length variance. I think we should say that it'd be tied to the site plan, because the site plan shows the concrete porch. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Number 10?
Oh, the problem is, do we have the, do we have the latest plan? Technically, we're not in committee yet. Yeah, the site, is this the, this is the revised plan? And just, Mr. Perez, the revised site plan that we're looking at, can't see the date.
Yeah, the revised one, that's the correct one. We reduced the side walkway and the ground at the front. So that is, that is the latest one.
So that reflects the amended variances?
That reflects the changes, correct.
Perfect, thank you. All right. So then, we can tie the site plan to that drawing, the revised site plan. I'm just not sure of the date. Is it on here somewhere? I think I... Did I put it in my notes? What date it was? No, I just said revised. All right. Anyway, go ahead. We'll go into committee now.
Okay, through you, Madam Chair. I'm trying to find that date. Well, I'd like to forward a motion to approve this application as amended. The numbers that have been changed is for variance number two, which is changed to 1.84. And variance number seven, changed to 1.18. And also the, subject to the condition that variance number four and five, regarding the west side, are setback in accordance with the site plan. So substantially in accordance with, I would put. And front elevation drawings submitted to committee adjustment attachment, number one to the staff report. And we would tie it to the revised site plan of the date. Do we have a date here? Anyone could find it? Because I was reading my motion.
The planning staff report is dated, oh, May 8th.
The revised plan, yeah.
Whatever the, there is a date, I think. I just can't see it, it's too small. In the bottom right title block?
It says January 2025.
But I don't think there's revisions indicated on here, and there's no date.
No.
Don't committee usually stamp it when they get revised plans? Yeah. If we make reference to the revised plans that are part of the package, should that be sufficient?
Would that be sufficient?
I don't think so. Because it looks like it probably came in the day... Uh huh.
January 2025. And if we put it for the, tie to the revised site plan. But then variance number three and four to the other plan. You see?
Well, it should be the same.
It should be.
Should be the same.
So we can add them all to...
All right, we'll pop out of committee for one minute. Mr. Perez, if you're there, could you tell us that, is there, we can't see a date on that revised site plan. Do you know when you submitted?
Yeah, it was April 17.
Okay.
All right.
That's when it was sent to committee?
Correct.
Thank you. All right, so we'll make reference to that. That should be enough. All right, back in.
It was the same day as the waiver.
Okay, thank you.
The waiver also says April 17. It was the same day as the waiver.
Okay.
All right.
Makes sense.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go back into committee.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. So, I have to repeat that? Or would you like to just add the date on the revised plan, April 17? Okay. All right, so that is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder? Mr. Coop... Oh, Ms. Martin, thank you. All in favor of the motion? That's unanimous. The application has been approved. Do we want a break? What are we on? 20... 26? Five-minute break? All right, quick, quick break. Mm-hmm. Thank you. We are back. I just have to put my camera back on. And we are on item 26, 62 Matawaska Avenue. This is an application for a two-story detached dwelling. We have variances for deck projection into rear yard, height of a building, exterior main front wall height, exterior main rear wall height, pedestrian entrance above grade, coverage, area of a platform and building length. On file, we have survey, plans, floor plans, site photos, supporting material, community planning report, two letters of support from 56 and 69 Matawaska and forestry memo. And I believe our applicant is anxiously awaiting at the podium.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Id Evangelista on behalf of the owners of 62 Matawaska.
Yeah, I can't tell. You have a projecting voice, but...
Okay. How's that?
That's good. Maybe just repeat. Name an address for...
Is that better? There we go. Id Evangelista, on behalf of the owners for 62 Matawaska.
Thank you. And do you have any changes to make to the application today?
I do.
Okay.
So, let's start with variance number one. That has been removed.
Okay.
Variance is number three, four, five, has been reduced to 10.59 meters.
Four, five. Yes, okay, just for the record, there's no change to variance two.
Correct.
Okay. Variance two remains. And then for variances three, four and five, you've indicated a change from, a change we've mod, we've reduced it to 10.59 meters.
For all three?
Correct.
Thank you. Variance number six has been removed. Sorry. Variance number seven remains as is. Variance number eight has been removed. And variance number nine remains as is.
Okay. All right. Um, we do have, we have a neighbor, I guess, in attendance for in-person. Is our neighbor here? No? Maybe they're online. So if you could provide us with a brief presentation, please?
So, the variances that you have in front of you as modified, we have made some substantial changes. And I do, I would just like to go over the variances that are in front of you today. If we can pull up my submission, I believe it's page three, which speaks to the length. So, in this particular situation, we do have a portion of the basement that has been included in the length of the dwelling. And that's why we have a length of 18.88. However, if we look at the, as you could see there in front of you, you could see the yellow portion is the additional length to the building. On the east side, we have a length of 11.98. And on the west side, we have a length of 16.98. And on the west side, we have a length of sixteen point four three. So, what is triggering our eighteen point eight eight? You'll see the lower picture. So, the upper picture shows you the portion of the basement that is included to the length. And you'll see the lower picture, which takes the length from the front main wall all the way to the rear basement wall. However, it's indiscernible from street level because it's underground. So, at ground level, the east side is eleven point nine eight meters in length, and the west side is sixteen point four three meters in length. Now, because of that portion of the basement, that also triggers the coverage. So, the coverage for the house itself is thirty-three percent. The basement area is added to coverage, and that's what gives us that coverage of thirty-seven percent. However, the house itself is thirty-three percent, which is very consistent in this neighborhood and very characteristic to this neighborhood. We, now, we have an overall length, oh, sorry, an overall height of ten point five nine meters, which is taken to the top of the roof. Now, you'll see that through my illustration, for a reason unbeknownst to many of us, the zoning examiner, and it is through her interpretation that she's taken the main wall height to the peak of the roof. Okay, she's taken it to the peak of the roof at the front, and she's taken it to the peak of the roof at the back. However, if we take a look, and you'll see, and I've added all the different, all the different heights for the frontage, for the front elevation and the rear. And you'll see that on the west side, we have a main wall height of eight point five four. On the east side, we have eight point three two, where the main wall actually meets the roof. So, we have tried, this is, this is variance that I believe the way the interpretation of the zoning examiner, how she deemed it to be for this particular home because of the style of the home, because of the fact, the way we have a gutterless system where the main wall meets the roof. It was not taken typically, it's taken to the, to the plate on the second floor, the ceiling of the second floor. But that's not the case here, in which had it been taken to the plate of the second floor, it'd be eight point three two meters. So, I can't change that. That has to remain as is. That is her interpretation, and that's gospel. So, we do have, but I will say this, the, the height of the floor, like, the floor heights are not egregious. We have ten meters on the first floor, and we have nine on the, sorry, ten feet on the first, and nine feet on the second floor. So, the floor heights are not egregious. It is very characteristics. You'll see through other pictures and other homes in the neighborhood. There are various levels, there are various main walls that depict through the characteristic of the neighborhood. So, what we're proposing, and there are different styles. You have some modern, you have traditional, you have transitional, which is what we're proposing. And I would like to state that the application that you have in front of you today is a perfected application. And I believe I respectfully submit that it is within the zoning bylaw and the official plan and characteristic to the neighborhood. And I'm open to any questions you may have.
Uh, first question. Did you discuss the application with planning staff prior to them writing the report?
I, we did, I did. I, I would like to say I've joined the team recently. And as soon as I did join the team, I did reach out to planning staff, I believe Hussein, he did reach out to planning staff. There wasn't a grasp of the building length, and there wasn't a grasp of what was, that that portion of the basement was contributing to the building length, nor was there a grasp that it was actually contributing to the coverage of this house.
And I'm gonna guess the height of the main and rear wall.
The overall, the overall height, as we, as it was amended, modified, was acceptable. The main wall height, no one can get around the main wall height and why it was taken to the main wall height, because we have articulation at the front of the house. And we have, on the east side, we have eight point three two meters. On the west side, we have, if you see where that, if you can enlarge the front elevation, you'll see there's that bay window at the front where it steps out, and it's five point five four meters. And then, you know, the flat portion steps back, and that gives you an eight point five four meter. So, there, there are different components, and there is much articulation to the front elevation. And why, you know, it wasn't, had it been even taken to the sides, had the, you know, main wall heights taken to the sides, that would have been a little bit more conducive, but not in this particular situation.
Okay. And if we wanted to ensure that the coverage, I'm trying to think of the way we would word it, to ensure that the coverage for the building remains at, you said thirty-three percent.
I would be, I, I would be amenable to tying the site plan or even the elevations, yeah, site plan and elevations to the, to the decision. I'd be open to that.
Okay. Does anyone else have questions?
I have a quick one. I don't know if I can ask this, but why are you extending the basement further than the main wall, the rear wall height? I guess I'm asking.
So, this is, this is a multi-generational home. And what this does is this allows the additional space for parents, for growing teens, to have an area. And you'll see the, the area in the basement level, that is like a rec room, right, for growing children. And that's...
I don't think you included any interior information. I think that's why I'm asking.
Oh, there's, 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 yeah.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, not in, I guess I gotta go further down a bit. Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, it's usually at the end of the set.
Hmm, oh, yeah, so it is. Okay. Yeah, yeah. All right. I'm just curious, and that you're not intending to build on top of that or anything if we tie it.
Through you, Madam Chair, Member Cassin, that's why I would... No, that's you. Through you, Madam Chair, a member, I, I would, that's why we are, we are in agreement to tie the elevations and the site plan.
Any further questions of the applicant? Ready to take it into committee? Oh, dear, yes. I forgot the neighbor. I mentioned the neighbor, and then I forgot. So, is there someone in the audience here for this item? No? Do we have them online? It said in person, that's why I was confused. Oh, maybe they're checking.
Through you, Madam Chair, I just spoke with the neighbor. She was just listening.
Oh, they're just listening. Okay, fine. Thank you. Okay.
And there are, the neighbors, as you saw, there was two letters of support and no one in opposition.
All right. So, I think we can take this into committee now? Yes. Comments?
I'll take it.
Sure.
I can put forward a motion to approve this application with the following changes to the variances. Variance one is eliminated. Variance three, four, and five is reduced to ten point five nine meters. Various six is eliminated. Various eight, variance, sorry, variance eight is eliminated. The rest variants stay the same. And this project will be tied to a site plan?
Let's say developed substantially in accordance with, I think it's site plan and elevation.
This project will be developed substantially in accordance with the site plan.
And elevation drawings.
And all elevations.
Because there's so many different elements. You almost need a model for this project. If it weren't so expensive to make them. All right. Any, is everyone okay with that? Sorry? Portion?
There is a forestry, I think. Let me just check. So, this is, and forestry condition three.
Three. Okay. Do you have a seconder? Mr. Kiboo? All right. All in favor of the application as amended? That's unanimous. The application has been approved. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item twenty-seven, two-eighty Maplehurst Avenue. This is an application for a two-story garden suite with a porch at the rear of the property. We have variances for east side yard setback, for an ancillary building, and floor area of a garden suite. On file, we have a survey, plans, site photos, a community planning report, and a deferral request? Am I... Then why do I, oh, sorry. Yeah, I have a deferral request. An email dated May ninth from Rubenoff to Farzana. Oh, they changed their mind. They withdrew it, the request? Thank you. Okay. So, we have some neighbors in person. Let's get our applicant on.
To St. Clair Avenue West, Toronto.
We, we didn't hear the name, even though we know who you are. Could you please?
Sorry, Glenn Rubenoff, from Rubenoff Design Group.
Thank you. Sorry, it's just the speaker wasn't on, so, just for the record. Thank you.
Sure.
To start with, do you have any changes to make to the application?
Yes, one change, I do. The staff report, part of the discussion with city planning was to amend the side yard setback request from point seven six meters to one point zero meters.
Sorry, and that is...
Variance number one.
That is variance...
Variance number one.
Variance number one, did you say?
That's correct.
And sorry, could you repeat the number?
From zero point seven six meters to one point zero meter.
Thank you. All right.
Should I proceed with the presentation?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, this is a property where my client wants to build for his daughter a garden suite in the rear yard. It was designed with the intention of it being its own space. So, we oriented it more to the side with a, with a patio on the other side, basically to give it its own space as opposed to a future development when they're gonna build their new house. The existing house, there's two variances before you today. One is for the side yard setback, which we amended to one point zero, where one point five is required. So, a difference of about point five meters. The other variance is related to the fact that the one-story existing dwelling of the house is only seventy-three square meters. So, it's a very, very tiny house, what's existing there. The house, the proposed garden suite actually complies as a garden suite, per se. But because the, the, the living space in it exceeds the living space of the main building, main house, that's why there's a variance for that. And that will obviously, wouldn't be the case if there was a bigger house there. But that's, the priority for them right now is to build their daughter this garden suite. And then, they'll, they'll look at their own circumstances. So, it's really just the, the fact that the bylaw says that an ancillary building needs to be smaller than the main building. So, that's the reason for that variance. And then you have a letter on, in your file, support from two, two-seventy-two Maplehurst on the left-hand side. And, and my clients have made an effort with the city planning department to make a, make, you know, to make it clear. The goal is, we saw the house at two-eighty-two extends back quite a bit further in the house at two-seventy-two. And the idea was to orient the garden suite so it was away from them. There's no windows on that wall, on that, on that side, on that east side. Everything's kind of oriented to the west side for the purposes of them having their own garden and their own porch, independent of, 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 trying to minimize the impact on, on, on the house at two-eighty-two. So, the, the application's, I think, a pretty straightforward application, and it's only got two variances. We don't have any height or other, other setback variances, obviously. Or, and, and like I said, the house itself, it's compliant with what is permitted for a garden suite. It's just because of the fact that the main house building is smaller than average. I'll leave it there, 'cause I realize there's other speakers, and I don't wanna keep you here all night. Thank you.
We appreciate that. Thank you. All right. Any questions for the applicant at this point? No? All right. Let's move on to the residence. If you'd like to come forward, please state your name and address. Make sure the microphone is on. It's not on.
Yes.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for this opportunity to express my concerns about this construction of the two-story building. First of all, I'd like to point out, after talking to the neighbors, we believe this...
Sorry, can you start with your name and address?
Sorry, my name is Siu. I'm the owner of the building right next door on the right, two-eighty-two Maplehurst Avenue. So, after talking to the neighbors, we believe this is probably a rental unit to start with. And I have a couple of concerns. So, the two major ones, the variations. First of all, they want to place a two-story building right next to my fence, which is one meter apart. So, this, this will be directly overlooking my backyard, and will be blocking the sunlight during the afternoon hours. And that really violates our privacy as a homeowner and, and our, like, sunshines. And I feel like I can't enjoy my backyard in the future anymore, because I'm always worried that someone will be, like, looking over me right on that side. And they removed all the trees in the backyard a year ago, so there's no, like, blockage of the viewing anyhow. And second of all, the one I concern more about is that they're proposing the interior floor area of one hundred fifteen square meters instead of, like, the limit they have, which is seventy-three meters. If you put that into perspective, that's almost two-thirds bigger than what the, what the regulation allows. And that means they'll have more people. And that means they'll have more people on this property, and more noise. And I have concerns about safety, as well as, like, you know, fire hazards and all that with more people on the property. I believe they, they extended their park, the, the parking lane, like, around a year ago to make more space for the parking. But still, there, there are cars parked in front of my house several times throughout the year, because they can't park, park cars in front of their house, because there's a fire hydrant right in the front of their lawn. So I have concerns about, like, the capacity of this property to accommodate a lot more people than the regulation allows. And more importantly, the letter of support, they're from the neighbor on the left, two seventy-two Maplehurst Avenue, she doesn't even live on the property, she rented out the property. And I've actually talked to her, and I got her formal rejection of her letter of support, which I'd like to submit if there's a way, because I just, sorry, I just got back from a vacation, and I couldn't got my documents in on time. And I hope there's still a way, a way to do that. So, in summary, there's, like, no communication with, with the neighbor who's actually impacted by this two-story building sticking right on, at the, at the rear of the property. And it violates the neighbor's privacy, blocks sunshine from entering our homes, and, and things, and there's more people on the property that'll create more noise and safety concerns. So we really hope that he can adhere to the government regulations about the, about the garden suite, so the owners can, you know, make more rental space available, but also without compromising his neighbor's nice living environment as of right now. And thank you for taking my concerns into consideration.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for this resident? No, okay. Is there anyone else here for this item? Can we start with your name and address, please?
Hi, my name is Jalu, and I live at the two seventy-one Greenfield Avenue, which is the face of the backyard. That is, is my home. Yeah, so I'm here to express my strong opposition to the proposed garden suite and associate variance request. When I first learned about the application, I assumed it was for a rebuild of the main house, but it turns, turns out this is for a completely separate two-story structure in the backyard. What's more concerning is that nearby neighbors, neighbors like myself were never consulted, even though the impact on our properties is direct and significant. So I'd like to outline three key concerns here. Firstly, is the setback reduction severely affects my privacy and light? So the proposed structure would be just one point zero meter from my property line, where the bylaw requires one point fifty-two meters. A two-story building that close would significantly reduce my family's privacy and block sun, sunlight into our backyard. This defeats the purpose of the required setback, and goes beyond what would respect, reasonably be considered a minor adjustment. It would directly affect how we enjoy our home every day. Secondly, the proposed garden suite is one hundred fourteen point forty-three square meters, which is nearly sixty percent larger than the permitted seventy-three point three square meters. That is, that is a major difference, not a minor variance. It creates a structure that's too large for the lot, and leads to an overcrowded, overbuilt condition, especially at the rear of the property where it impacts neighbors the most. Also, thirdly, with such narrow gap between the structure and the fence, there is almost no, no room for proper drainage or building maintenance. This raises real concerns about water runoff, long-term upkeep, and potential conflicts between properties. Responsible development should consider not just the structure itself, but also how it affects adjacent homes. In this case, there is no margin for managing future issues. So in my view, this proposal does not meet the intent of the zoning by law, does not respect the character of the neighborhood, and is not a minor change in either size or impact. It also fails to meet the test set out under section forty-five point one of the Planning Act, particularly regarding scale and capability with the surrounding homes. I fully support thoughtful development, but not at the expense of my own property rights, privacy, and peace of mind. So for all these reasons, I respectfully ask the committee to deny this application. Thank you so much.
Any questions for the resident? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here for this item? No? All right. Mr. Rubenoff, if you could come back and address the concerns that have been raised by the residents?
Yes, thank you very much. So with regards, I want to address one seventy-one Greenfield first. I believe that was the second speaker who came and spoke there from, behind the property. They were concerned about the setback variance. But to the rear yard, we are in compliance. We do have the one point five meter setback, so we're not encroaching on the rear yard. And it's more than adequate space to provide for maintenance around that. I will also say that a one-meter setback is still three and a half feet, more or less, of space adjacent to the lot, so, on the side. So it's also not unmanageable, it's a very manageable space to work with. As terms of light and privacy and safety was mentioned, I wanted to address the fact that garden suites are permitted, in fact encouraged, in the rear yards of homes in this area. Just from the staff report, comments. Policy three-two-one-one of the official plan encourages a full range of housing in terms of form, tenure, and affordability across the city. The addition of a garden suite in this lot supports this policy. So as such, community planning are of the opinion that the revised proposal meets the intent of the official plan and zoning by law. And I'll, that's kind of their comment there. With regards to safety, I'm not sure what that, what the concerns are with that. With regards to location of the garden suite, it's at the back of the property. It shouldn't have a significant impact on the, on the enjoyment of two eighty-two, it's far enough away from them that, that, I'm not sure what the concern is with regards to light and privacy. Privacy, we, there are no windows on that side of the unit as well, so there's no privacy in, in, in the way that they might suggest. The calculation of square footage for the garden suite was, was suggested that it's bigger than what's permitted. It's in relation to the existing home that's on the property, not in relation to the square footage permitted for a garden suite there. We are, we are complying with what the garden suite bylaw permits. It just happens to be that the existing home is quite small. And a bungalow. Parking, they mentioned some concerns about parking being an issue. I don't believe that I would see how that could be a case, but this is a fifty-foot lot, there's plenty of parking on the site, so. So, yeah, those are the points that were brought up, and those are my, my responses to those. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Follow-up questions? No? Okay, we're ready to take this into committee then. Thank you.
I, I have to admit, when I was going through this, I had a hard time wondering whether this was a house or a, a garden suite. Because it is, it looks like, when you look at the elevations, it strikes me as a full house. So, and, a small house, yes, but nevertheless, a house, and, and bigger, and bigger than the house that's sitting there. Is what they have already commented on. And the windows at the back being only, I think it's only, what, one point, one point two meters from the rear property line?
One point five, I believe.
One point five?
Yeah.
Yeah. Actually, I think it's less. I think it's one point, it's, it's four point one-one, I think, from the property line, four feet. They did it in Imperial.
Pretty sure the applicant said it's meeting the set, this.
It might be meeting the setback, but it is only four, four feet something, I think.
Oh, I see what you saw, four foot eleven.
Yeah, exactly.
Isn't that one point five?
No, it's one point two, one point three around. Yeah. So anyway, my point is, my point is, if I was wanting to use the rear part of my backyard on the house backing onto it, I'd feel like that space had been taken away from me.
But there's no variance for that, like, it's permitted?
No, but there's a variance on the size of the house.
But it's related to the existing house on the property. We had one of these previously. You might not have been on the panel, but we had another one where it was a bungalow like that, and they were putting a, might have been a laneway suite, not a garden suite, so. But it's because they tied, the zoning ties it to the size of the existing house?
I get that, I heard that from them, but, I mean, that's still, it's still an imposing structure at the property, that's all.
I think it's a matter of whether.
I mean, I'm not against garden suites by any means, I think they're, they help to create more housing in Toronto, and to create more affordable housing in Toronto. So.
So it's really how it affects the variances. So if, if there was a bigger house out front, this would not be a variance, the variance number two.
If there was a bigger house, you might not be able to, it might, it might trigger other variances, so, right?
It's possible.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Because you look at the house beside this, the existing house, and it's substantially bigger. And I'm not sure they could put a suite on their property and still meet the setback variances, things like that, right?
You're right, it could, it could trigger additional variances.
Yeah. Anyway, that's my.
All right.
My comments. Anybody else?
Yeah, there's also the possibility that once, if they were to build this, then they're going to come in for a new house, and it's going to have all the variances. It could be triggered backwards, backwards triggering.
Backwards.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, any other comments, or does anyone want to move a motion? I mean, community planning does not have an issue with it, other than modifying the variance, which they've complied with it, complied with.
Through Madam Chair, I, I've heard the, my colleagues' comments on this, and I understand the explanation. At the same time, I think, well, we have, we have the application of garden suite there, and as you have mentioned, Madam Chair, community planning does not have the issue, and there, there was modification with this application, so, for that reason, I think you could use a supportive application, in my opinion, in that regard. So, unless, any other comments on this?
No, I don't have any further comments.
All right, so I'll forward a motion for approval of this application, as amended. So, the variance number one was changed to one point zero meter. And let me take a look at the, if there are any other conditions there? No. There are no other conditions. So I believe that's the motion I'd like to forward.
Thank you, do we have a seconder for that motion? Mr. Kibu seconds it? All in favor of the motion? So that is three in favor and opposed. Ms. Martin is opposed. The application has been approved. Thank you. Item twenty-eight, for Bushbury Drive. This is an application to construct a three-story dwelling with a rear balcony. We have variances for front yard setback, west side yard setback, building height, building length, building depth, and area of a platform. On file, we have a survey, plans, revised plans, tree inventory assessment, urban forestry memo, ravine and natural feature protection memo, community planning report, TRCA memo, two letters of objection from seventy-five Laurentide and six Bushbury Drive.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. I, we got a request for unmute, but we're the next one. This is number twenty-eight, we're number twenty-nine, I think there is a staff mistake.
Thank you. So we're looking for twenty-eight, forty, for Bushbury, so we're looking for Giorgio Lolas.
Yeah.
Are you there?
Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of committee, and members of community and staff. My name is Giorgio Lolas, we're getting the file in front of us here today.
And your address?
Two twenty Duncan Mills Road.
Thank you. And before we start, do you have any changes to make to the application today?
No, the only changes that, that have been updated from our original submission was coordinating with planning and adjusting certain couple of variances, but I believe the variances today in question are the ones that were made during the, the coordinating with planning.
Sorry, I need you to slow down a little bit. Could we start with the public meeting notice and identify the variances that have changed? So we'll just go through the whole list, and you can tell us if there's any change. Any change to variance one?
Nope.
Variance two?
No.
Three?
No.
Four?
No.
Five?
No, Madam.
Sorry?
No, no.
Not, not to five?
Uh, not to five, no.
Six?
Hold on, just a second, Madam Chair. Hold on a second. Hold on, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I don't know if I received the right, the right public hearing notice. We have made changes.
You might have looked at the zoning notice, I think.
No, I, I looked at the public notice, hearing notice that I received.
That's what we're looking at.
Okay, so apparently, okay, for example, who wants, who wants six? Okay. I believe, okay. Again, I believe, can we ask Secretary Treasurer if this is the, if these, if these minor variances, alterations, are subject to the planning report that we received, and the coordinating with the planning report?
They're supposed to be.
There, there is a plan, there is a plan report on file. They, that plan report likely doesn't reflect the.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's, that's it, that's it, okay, see, okay. Okay, so yes, Madam Chair, according to the staff report, variances one, two, and three have been altered, according to what's there now. So variance number one, which is not equal, okay, which is actually variance number three, has been reduced to eleven meters.
Okay, hold on one sec here. I think, I think something's a little off here on the report because they're recommending changes to three, four, and five, but then they say if those changes aren't made, one, two, and three should be refused. Bit confused.
Okay, skip, no. Uh, let's, let's, let's walk through the report that we got.
Let's just.
I believe variance.
Let's just go with the public meeting notice and we'll read the variances to make sure we've got them right. So the variance one is front yard setback, there's no change to that, correct?
Eight meters, correct, correct, asking for eight meters.
And variance number two is, uh, side yard, west side yard setback of one point eight one, that hasn't changed.
That hasn't changed, Madam Chair.
And then variance number three is proposed building height of eleven point one six. I think.
That I believe has been changed to eleven meters.
To eleven, right, okay.
Uh, let's, let's look at the staff report from the planning department, again, those three items that they were there.
They make reference to variance three, four, and five. Okay, so let's go on to number four at this point.
Yeah.
Building length, uh, nineteen meters was what was proposed.
And I think we reduce it to eighteen point five, but I want to verify that with that report, again, I'm looking at a note.
We're looking at both, so that's okay.
Okay.
And then.
So is it?
It's eighteen point five.
Eighteen point five, right? Yes. Okay. And then number five?
Five is for building depth? And that has been changed from twenty point three seven to?
Nineteen point eight three, eight three, I think it is?
Eight seven.
Eight?
Nineteen.
She was the same.
Eight seven.
Eight seven? Well, she was the same, she was the same denomination of point five. Less.
The staff report says variance five be changed from twenty point three seven to nineteen point eight seven.
Okay, let's go with that.
All right. And then, uh, sorry, now I lost my public meeting.
Number six.
Number six, any change to that number six, the platform?
No, Mad, no, Madam Chair.
So, okay, and that's it, I believe, right?
Yes.
Okay. Now we have that established. So those are the changes and we do have a resident in attendance, I understand. On, online, right? Oh, they're in, sorry, online. But you're pointing to someone in the audience? Oh, oh, sorry. I only have one listed, so that's fine. So we do have residents in attendance then. Could you please provide us with a brief presentation, basically addressing the variances?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. First and foremost, uh, we understand and recognize, and we do respect neighbors and privacy, but we also have to have to respect the fact that, you know, uh, when a client of ours was looking for many, many years to move into this area, to entertain, uh, the area itself and to bring his family into this area, he had to, we had to sort of maintain a certain family requirements. But yeah, we didn't lose touch of understanding and recognizing the respect of the neighbors and their privacy and so forth. So according to what we've prepared to all the variances, we took everything into consideration. The, the front yard setback of eight meters is supposed to nine, is only really, is only really, we're asking for that section on a one-story along the east side, not along the west side, where the west side setback is equal to the house, the actual house itself, which is the favor to the left, which I believe is in attendance. The second story side yard setback for, uh, for, uh, one point eight meters to two point four, uh, or two point four required rest of four hundred. That area there is only a small area of the second floor that we have to entertain, um, a walk-in closet area and an on-street area, but again, that area in itself does not have any windows along that side, and it's only about twenty-six percent out of, uh, out of the depth out of the second story. That's the only area that we're asking for, uh, that's one point eight meter section. Number three, the height itself, again, understanding and recognizing neighbors, shadowing, you know, veg, veg, vegetable gardens and so forth. Understand the fact that our main building of a three-story conforms with the high lot, with the, the only area that we're asking for that additional to eleven meters is the section that is in the center towards the back of the house where the master bedroom is, it's raised there. We have more like a conservatory sort of window system going all the way around the master bedroom. So again, that area that we're asking for is approximately less than twenty-five percent than the overall massing of the roof itself. And again, it's in the center, and again, visibly, if you're standing on the street, you're never going to notice it, but the most important thing is respecting the neighbors. But our main roof conforms, our third-story roof overall conforms with the height variance restriction. The, number four, for the, that permitted maximum building depth. Again, if we took, if we take in, in consideration here, what is the, what is the definition of building length? Well, we're allowed seventeen meters, we're allowed seventeen meters of three stories. If you look at our angulation of our home to the sides, our, our home pyramids inwards accordingly as each floor goes in. So technically speaking, it's taken from a one-story area at the front of the house where we're asking for the start of the eight meters to the very back of a solarium of two-story slab which is in the center of the house. So again, on either side, east or west, we don't impact a full eighteen point five. It's, it's angulated, okay? Number five, which is the, the building depth. Building depth is actually not true because a portion of one point three seven meters of this building depth is underground. It's the basement area towards the back where the walkout enters the backyard. So technically speaking, it's again, a once, taking from the one-story area in the front to the rear yard below ground basement perimeter. Again, the most, the, 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 uh, variance number six, again, the homeowners that have been looking for this area to buy their home, buy a property, finally managed it, and they bought it for the reasons of beauty, setbacks, and privacy, and the urban sort of, um, you know, uh, rural yard sort of setbacks as far as greenery. Off the master bedroom in the rear yard, we have a master pla, platform entertaining the backyard. It's nestled in the center of the house, so it's not anywhere close to the, not side yards, it's just listed, looking at the backyard, and yes, we are asking for a larger platform than the bylaw requires. Again, we are so far within the neighbors, we feel that it's minor in nature. And again, if it suits, if it, it suits the committee, we can always entertain privacy fencing along those two sides if, if it comes down to that. But I believe that distances shouldn't play a role. And again, those moments of, in the balcony is just for coffee, morning coffees and a bit, a bit of, uh, pressure during the daytime or before the evenings. And that's about the extent of our variances, and I believe that given the consideration of respecting the neighbors' privacy and envelope of what we're proposing, we feel the, the, the variances are minor in nature.
All right, thank you, you just finished in time. Does anyone have any questions of the applicant? No? All right, let's hear from the neighbor, we'll start with the neighbor in the, in the committee room? If you give us your name and address first?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the committee, I understand it's been a long afternoon, so thank you. My name is Erin Lau and I represent my parents, the owners of the immediate neighboring one-story envelope six Bushbury Drive. We are asking the committee to deny the requested variances because this application directly affects our home in five substantial ways. Number one, the loss of privacy. Number two, oversized massing. Number three, the reduction and obstruction of natural light. Number four, threats to a healthy, mature American elm, and five, the loss of neighborhood character. Our home was inspired by homes in the neighborhood and by mid-century architectural greats like Joseph Eichler and Frank Lloyd Wright, who believed that homes should nurture well-being and embrace light and landscape and not overpower them. Even with varying widths moving up, the proposed height of eleven meters, nearly two times our bungalow, along with a reduced side yard setback of one point eight one meters instead of the required two point four meters, effectively engulfs our bungalow with its imposing build. One point five meters in variance may not seem like a lot, but multiplied by sheer mass, the variance is substantial and imposing. On the side, all the large two-story homes in the neighborhood have a separation of at least five to six meters, which is sixteen to twenty feet. We are asking the committee to maintain this spatial relief instead of reducing the side setback to one point eight meters, especially considering the difference in massing is so great. Currently, the separation between our two homes is three point seven five meters in total separation, which is thirty percent to thirty-eight percent less than every other large home in the neighborhood. Our bedrooms, bathrooms, and skylights on the east side all face the proposed build. The ground floor loggia has side openings that look directly into these private spaces that are just steps away. We've discussed this briefly with the new owners, and while the intent is to enjoy the ravines, designs outlast ownership. Furniture shifts, guests gather, and over time, intentions will evolve. Privacy should not be dependent on furniture placement, it should be protected by design. The third-floor rear balcony, or the platform as referenced, originally proposed at sixteen meters squared is four times the bylaw limit. It would allow for elevated direct overlook into our home and our rear yard. We've heard this may now comply with zoning, but current plans indicate that this still exceeds the bylaws at twelve point zero eight meters squared. We want to peacefully enjoy our home without feeling exposed. We have not seen a plan with established line of sight from this builder. We have also met with an arborist and are waiting for our formal valuation on the mature elm at the rear of our property which borders the proposed pool. For your reference, it's tree number five on, on the tree plan. On paper, the excavation might appear safe, but in reality, a three-foot overdig is typically needed to install and service the pool for its valves and plumbing. This would damage our tree's root system and has not been accounted for. There's also the noticeable drop in elevation, grading, erosion, and drainage risk which already exists within the neighborhood as there are floodings of basements along that street after heavy rains. We respectfully request that a grading and drainage plan as well as a tree protection plan be required as conditions of any approval. Toronto's official plan calls for new development to respect and reinforce the character of established neighborhoods, including its height, massing, and setbacks. But we ask you respectfully, how is that character being protected when every major zoning limit is pushed and the recommended changes from the staff report amount to only the most minimal concessions? We counted and there are approximately one hundred and twenty-six homes in our immediate neighborhood. Only eight of them are two-story builds. There is one two-and-a-half-story build, but no full three-story build. The rest of the homes are low, single-story homes or side splits. This application asks for variance in nearly every major dimension, height, width, length, and depth, and a platform that's more like an outdoor room. We are not against redevelopment, but it must happen within the framework of harmony and planning integrity. We reviewed the staff report which recommends reducing the height from eleven point one six to eleven meters, the zoning bylaws is nine point five, the depth from twenty point thirty-seven to nineteen point eight seven, and the length from nineteen meters to eighteen point five, the zoning bylaw is seventeen. While these reductions are noted, they are only incremental, only a matter of inches, too small to be meaningfully change the experience of someone living next door in a one-story bungalow to a structure that's nearly double their height. The proposed build includes life-altering changes for our family. It will box us in, it will directly affect how we experience light, space, and privacy. We ask the committee to weigh all of these effects, not only on paper, but in real human terms. Put yourselves in our shoes. I'm almost done. Madam, Madam Chair, I'm almost done, I will quickly wrap up. Our home is where we have discovered the joy in daily life, is multi-generational. It is here that my father began drawing and painting for the first time, inspired by the way sunlight moves through the house and over the course of the day. The open design has given us space to breathe, heal, grow, and feel at peace. Please do not take this away. We've met with the new owners and we sincerely want them to enjoy their home, but both families deserve that right, and mutual enjoyment begins with mutual respect for the bylaws that exist to protect it. The subject property already benefits from a large and generous lot size of twenty-four point three by sixty-four point six-three meters. A home built within zoning limits with proper setbacks, especially on the side, would let both homes thrive.
All right, we'll have to cut you off there.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your comments. Does anyone have any questions for the president? No? All right, thank you.
I, I have a quick question.
Oh, sorry.
So do you, I'm just curious, what is, what is, what does your, um, your side wall look like that faces the building?
It's all bedroom and bathroom windows.
Along that, that east sidewalk?
That's correct. The loggia that opens up to it looks directly into those private areas as does, uh, the window on the house, if you look at the side-facing plans of the, of the drawing.
I mean, right now, your building is substantially longer than the existing building.
Uh, yes, uh, by a little bit, yes.
The new build will be about the same length, I think.
Uh, except for it has more, um.
It's got more height, for sure.
More height, for sure, and even with the varying widths moving upwards, the sheer mass of it, it, it completely negates the one-story build next to it. It, it's intimidating and imposing, as well as that's, uh, the sixteen-meter square balcony at the back. Um, only four meters is, is, um, approved by the city for the zoning, and there's currently, I think the revised plans are at thirteen point ten feet, which is twelve point eight meters, twelve point zero eight meters squared. So it's already three times larger than what's allowed.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, is there any additional questions?
You just, you do realize that a three-story building, dwelling is permitted on the site in the zoning bylaw?
We do understand that, but we respectfully, Madam Chair, also want to know of the hundred and twenty-six homes in the neighborhood, um, there are no three-story builds.
Okay, thank you. Anything further? Let's have the, uh, person online, please. I know, but there's one online.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hello?
Name and address?
Nina Stoltz, seventy, hi, Nina Stoltz, seventy-five Laurentide Drive, I have no further comments.
Okay, thank you. All right, could we have the applicant back to address the comments raised by the neighbors?
Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, uh, there's a lot of sort of comments reflected by the neighbor who are right left, which is the west side. I'll try to remember all of the, that she's, uh, reflected, I'll, I'll, I'll navigate as much as I can to the answers. Well, I, I think one of the committee members says that, yes, we're allowed three stories, I understand, and that is actually around the corner towards Laurentide, there isn't a three-story dwelling there existing already. And again, by, by, by virtue of bylaw requirements, which have actually helped us as far as the massing is concerned, because at the end of the day, she mentioned massing. Well, understanding and recognition is that right now, there is no, there's no coverage request, even with all the areas that are not dwelling, our dwelling coverage, our actual home itself, is twenty percent of, forty percent of the lot area. The twenty-five percent overall is all inclusive of covered loggia, covered barbecues, and a front yard covered canopy. Again, that twenty-five percent is within the bylaw regulations as far as what defines massing. So again, if we didn't, if we didn't go for the third story, I'm pretty sure we would be asking for coverage, which would be more hindering on, on our property. She mentioned that the, um, according to the, our arborist, that. according to the arborist, that elm tree needs a tree protection zone of three meters, as indicated in our site plan. The distance from that elm tree to our pool is eight meters, plus or minus. And let's just say, as she mentioned, there's a three meter, there's a point three feet setback, three meter, whatever, three feet. We would still be approximately 7.7 meters away, well within the required arborist definition of tree protection zone of three meters. We would still be five meters away, or 4.5 meters away from protecting that tree. Privacy, windows, yeah, let's talk about windows. And again, the only window along the our west side exposed elevation is in the second story, which is 2.4 meters away, and it's a laundry room. The only time they will be spending laundry is to do their laundry. They're not sleeping in it, it's just, it's just a mandatory thing that we have for ventilation, natural ventilation, and natural light under the, under state that anybody in their right mind would have a window in the laundry room just for lighting purpose itself and ventilation. So that is the only window that's actually facing their immediate bedroom sides. The, all the other windows are, they're not. There's one in the basement, there's a man door, and that's basically it. There is windows in the third-story east side, it's west exposure, but they're transits, they're about, they start about five-and-a-half feet high, and they end up about seven-and-a-half, so really you gotta be on a step ladder to look down. But even then, the location of that third-story on-street by the actual second, third-story roofline, there's no sidelines to that windows. You can't see them. She mentioned as far as building depth. Their existing dwelling will be approximately about four meters deeper than our rear yard covered, I mean, our rear yard depth variance, which is building depth. In actual fact, our actual structure itself is approximately 8.5 meters further in the property line. So, again, if you actually look at the structure of the dwelling, if they're structured in dwelling, we're about eight meters back along that west side. So, again, I mean, I started by saying that we respect our neighbors, we really do, and I, and I know this because I've been doing this long enough to understand and recognize comments that I've received in multiple years, and we have to respect our neighbors, I get it. But again, what we're asking for, again, she said there's multiple, every major variance. But if you look at the fact itself, they're minor in nature. Again, the side yard setback, we're only asking about 25% of that second-story wall, which is approximately, almost, one second. I have written down, but again, it's, I think it's a, it's, it's really, doesn't really matter that this, we're about 25% that we're asking for in culture with no windows. So, again, I don't know what else to tell, to tell advice committees, but I think we did our due diligence thoroughly as far as, as far as respecting our neighbors' privacy. And again, opposing that same reason, if, if it pleases committee, we will contain privacy fencing on either side, east and west, left and right side, of our third-story balcony to convey privacy issues.
Okay. Do we have any questions, follow-up questions for the applicant? Any consent, no? All right. Thank you, we'll take this into committee.
Welcome back.
Comments, questions?
My one comment is, it seems that there is only, and correct me, it's been a long day, but there's only a small portion of, it's like a, almost like a cupola, a modern cupola that is actually 11 meters wide. The rest of the building is within.
The height.
The height, correct.
That's my understanding, it's the little piece you can see on the elevation drawings that steps up. And it is in the middle of the building as the applicant had indicated.
Where is this third floor, is the third-floor balcony? Is that another, is that this? Is that?
Oh, it's, it's out the back of the.
Right, I see it, yeah. And it goes right around, actually. Oh, no, there's a planter.
It's just a.
There's a planter blocking it, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
It's somewhat inside, yeah.
Yeah.
But it does, you can see it from the side, I think.
Right, okay.
So if, if, you know, if privacy is a concern.
Privacy screens maybe might be a good idea. Although it's hard to say because of these flat roofs, this is such a complicated building. If these flat roofs are at the, higher than the balcony, I guess they're at the same height. That's right, okay.
Yep, anyone want to? Let's just go back to the variances for a sec, or the, let's look at the staff report, the community planning report. I mean, I totally sympathize with the neighbor, and I can imagine what that house is like and the existing condition, and I'm sure it's lovely in the backyard and it's very nice. Unfortunately, you know, the bylaw does permit a building of this size, and there is the side yard setback, I guess that is one thing that, on that side, that could be of concern. Otherwise, the, the variances are relatively minor to the bylaw. We consider the bylaw not necessarily the context. So. The west side yard setback, the proposal is for 1.81, whereas 2.4 is required. But I think the other, that's the only one I really have concern with, given the size of this property and the context. Yeah. And is it appropriate, given a brand-new house coming in, to reduce the setback like that, given the size of this house, it's huge?
It's huge in height, but it's actually not as deep as the west.
True.
Yeah. It's, it looks more imposing because it's like a square rectangle.
That is true.
Yeah.
You're right.
Yeah. So, I mean.
And the majority of the house is two stories.
Right, absolutely. And it looks like it's, it's only 1.8 for maybe, maybe two, you know, it's not for the whole west side if you look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does set back a bit. They have a fireplace or something on that deck that is, is at 1.83.
Is that on the site plan?
Yeah. I presume that's what that is. There's two trees there, I presume those trees are not going to survive or they're coming out. See on the west side?
Yeah. It's hard to read this drawing. Sore. Yeah, they're small. All right, what do we think? Whereas when you rotate one, you rotate the whole thing.
When you start looking at it, it, there's a small portion that is only 11 meters as we know. And it doesn't encroach beyond the house to the west. It only encroaches slightly beyond the house to the east. It does not impinge on all the trees to the north on the existing site, I don't think. I shouldn't say that too loudly, I'm not positive on that. Are we approving this, is that a pool or something?
The pool?
Yeah.
I mean, it's shown on the site plan, but I don't think, there's no variance for a pool, so.
There's no variance on it, yeah.
The staff report is recommending that the proposal be developed substantially in accordance with the site plan, and they listed the elevation separately, but I think it's all elevation drawings from what I can tell. Because it's the front, rear, right, and left. So.
So.
I think a pool permit is usually separate?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so, any other comment?
Through you, Madam Chair, I'm, I'm fine with the application, I think. I don't have any concerns on that after the revisions.
And any, any other comments? If not, I'm okay with, yeah.
I'm also quite fine, I'm fine with this application. There are a couple of houses around the area which have quite the same size, so it's not completely new. The, the, the neighborhood appeared before us just a while ago, indicated that there are these three houses with the same dimension around the area. Although it's not, it should not be the norm, but it is something which is a practice, and I'm of the opinion that we should go with this, approve this application.
As amended. All right, does someone want to make a motion?
All right, through you, Madam Chair, I think I'm, I, I don't have concerns after revision. The explanation of the applicant was satisfactory, I understood the concerns of the neighbors. I totally understand, in terms of the permission of the three-story, it is permitted by law. I, I understand the numbers that the neighbor provided to us, but in, that means the numbers are there, it is permitted by law. So we have to stick into that. For that reason, I think the application is supportive for me. It satisfies the foretest. I'd like to forward a motion to approve the application as amended. We have the numbers. Let me just have a look, just for everyone to just review it again. Variance number three changed to 11.0 meters. Variance number four changed to 18.5 meters. And variance number five changed to 19.87 meters. I also like to add the condition of, per staff recommendation, that the proposal be developed substantially in accordance with the site plan drawing. Front, which is the south elevation drawing, rear north elevation drawing, right east elevation drawing, and left west elevation drawing submitted to committee of adjustment, attachment numbers one, two, three, four, and five to the report. I, I believe I also like to add the condition for the privacy screen in the rear balcony, the east and west side, with a height of 1.5 meters. I believe forest three has another condition for that, so the numbers are condition number three. I'd like to add that condition as well. For, for the ravine, there are no conditions. And this is the motion.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second or? Ms. Martin? All in favor of the motion? That is unanimous, the application has been approved. All right, the last but not least application is 40 Larkfield Drive. This is for a new detached dwelling, we have variances for a number of stories, main pedestrian entrance height, area of a platform and front porch, and rear platform and coverage. On file, we have a survey, plans, cover letter, a presentation, clarification letter for neighbors, five letters of objection. We have our applicant.
Good afternoon, almost good evening, Madam Chair. So, this is Sean Tucci from Memar Architects, representing the owner and for this application. With your permission, I would like to do a presentation just to clarify a few items when you see fit.
All right, thank you. Oh, yes, do you have any changes to make to the application today?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Can we, yeah, this is a good, good document. If you could go to the last page, I will be probably focusing like to the last two pages. So let's start with the page five, yes, this one. So, we started this, this project for the owners towards the end of last year, after the zoning bylaw changed the definition of basement. And, and I want to start with showing you the, the general look and feeling of the houses, the new houses that are being built, which we want to sort of show as comparison. So the two houses on the top, the pictures, as you can see, they're literally less than one-minute drive, exactly in the same street. And the one on the lower left, 19 Cisara or Chisara, cord is literally across this, this, this property. And as you can see, our design is very much the same as what is happening in the neighborhood. Then it brings the question up, so what are these variances? Are they, are they in, in sort of keeping with the character of the neighborhood? So I want to sort of start by showing the design that is very much in what is being built there. Now, if you could go for the previous page, page four, I can sort of start going over the presentation. So, the way, the way the new sort of way of saying what's basement is sort of measured is that they want the basement to be somewhat deeper than the first floor from the grade. So if you look at the grade, they say, okay, basement has to be deeper. So in this, in this proposal, the basement is under the ground quite a bit. But the point is, the point is, it's not as, it's not deeper than the ground floor. So if the ground floor is about one-and-a-half meter, this one, which is what it is, right? That's what you see in your proposal, instead of 1.2, it is one-and-a-half. So it's only one foot more than what it's supposed to be. The basement, when it is not more, it automatically makes the basement as the first floor. This is how the, the new zoning measures the basement. So how do we typically address this? How do we fix this so it doesn't show a three-story? Is that we make, we make sure that the basement gets deeper. The basement height becomes more, right? So now we have like a, like a higher basement, and then it's going to address. So it's going to look the same way, the basement is deeper, we dig more, we dig the ground more. So now basement goes more than the basement based on the way the zoning is counts as basement. We couldn't do that, and this is what we typically do, because we'd rather not to bring in front of you a three-story, even on paper, right? We'd rather not do that, and because it also triggers the variance number three in this case, which now, the red area you see in front, where it says front porch, that is counting as a second floor, which triggers the other variances which we're going to go over. So, why we didn't do it for this house? So this house, with, with a couple of houses around it, are the lowest points of a, of an almost like one kilometer radius, and they connect to a park, the park beside it, which is the Repleton Park. And that moves to the, to the huge large sport, like creek called Vilket Creek, which basically is a way of the whole neighborhood managing the water and the movement. So the water levels for this specific house, and few houses around it is high. So that means if you wanted to really do what we typically do, that we dig the basement deeper to avoid these variances, then we'll have a lot of water issues, you know, a lot of issues for, for neighbors and all. All in all, we discussed that with our civil engineer, and, and they recommended that this is really, yeah, so you could see, this is a very good picture. You see that ripple part? So on the, your left, it goes all the way down. We don't see the rest, but it goes to the, to the, uh, to, to the creek, like, which is huge. It's like few kilometers. It's way of the, way of the city of Toronto draining itself, right? Um, so this becomes that lower point. And if you can go back to the presentation, page four, uh, we have to keep the basement where it is. So now that we have to keep it, it is causing the basement, which is actually basement, it is on the ground. Zoning-wise, technically, it's considered the first floor. And, uh, our first floor becomes second floor, and second floor becomes third floor. But as you look at the design, it is a two-story, um, and, um, and, and the other variance, which is variance one. So that's why we have the variance one. Um, and again, if you, if the committee decides to approve the application, we're fine for the, for, for the design to be tied, um, or the site plan, whatever you see fit. Um, and then the third one comes as a result of that, because now that, uh, like a red area that you see in front of you, that becomes a balcony of a second floor, even though that is only one and a half meter. So that is why that we have the second floor, um, the, the number three comes from this result. So let's say if we would dig the basement deeper, we would not have the variance one, and we would not have the variance two. So if you want to somewhat compare to this variance three, my apologies. So variance one and variance three wouldn't be there if we didn't have this water issue. So if you want to really compare this, the effect of it, you're looking at two variants, which is one is, we have to be one point two and we're one and a half, right? And then we're supposed to be thirty percent and we're thirty-two. Now, if you could go, um, to the, uh, and, and look at the setbacks, like even this image is good. Like we have three meters setback on each side, we have seven and a half meter, and everything we're talking about, that thirty-two percent, we have zero building length, we have even more than what is required on the side yard setbacks, we have more than what is required on the front and rear. So as a result, we think it's a very good sample of, um, a committee of adjustment application where, where the site condition and, um, and environmental restrictions is causing these technical variances. As a res- the result, we think is very much in keeping. We believe the variances are very minor in nature, and they pass the four tests, and we respectfully request approval. Any question, I would be happy to answer.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant? Anyone? Go ahead, Ms. Martin.
I think you'd, the, the better illustration of the basement issue is, I think it's eight point oh-one or something like that. That really shows, so I'm not sure why you showed that drawing as opposed to the other.
Yes, yeah, yeah, I, I thought, yeah, through you, Madam Chair, um, so as, um, uh, to, to answer, uh, Ms. Martin's question, yeah, it's, you're correct. Like I could use this, but I thought the front design sort of shows the relationship of the elevations and how things are. But you're correct. You see that below that red area? If basically we excavate that, like if we right now go ahead and excavate that, we will eliminate one and three. But then, as I mentioned, we're going to go below the neighboring footings, which is not recommended, and a few other issues. Uh, and that's why we prefer to keep this, um, for the, for the reason I mentioned. But you're correct, like this is a, probably a better illustration of, um, what would be. But the point is, it wouldn't really impact the look, right? Like, it, it, whether the basement, we'll dig it three feet more or less, it wouldn't impact how the building looked like, thus the, the, the variance one or three.
Sorry, any further questions for the applicant? We'll move on to the residents. Please. Oh, okay.
Through you, Mad- Madam Chair, do you want us to unmute the residents?
Yes, please.
Regarding, regarding one of the neighbors, Peter Topos. Uh, we contacted and he had some issue, couldn't, uh, participate, but he reached, uh, he sent us the email.
Okay.
But we have Hu Yen Lau, and I'm going to unmute.
Okay. Yeah. Well, yeah, it'd just be one of them. Yes. Hello?
Through you, Madam Chair, we are requested, uh, we sent a request for unmute to Hu Yen Lau. Uh, he needs to, oh, he or she needs to accept the request so they can unmute themselves.
Alright, um, oh, Hu Yen Lau, um, if you can hear us, you need to accept the request. Oh, are you there?
Yes, 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 I can hear you.
Good.
Yeah.
Great, and we can hear you, so we're both invisible. Um, alright, if you would like to just state your name and address for the record, please?
It's Hu Yen Lau, last name is L A U Lau, Thirty-Eight Larkfield Drive, North York, M. Fried, N. Two H One.
Thank you very much. Alright, if you could provide us your comments, please?
Uh, we, we, we just want to make sure that, uh, the building, uh, is, uh, is away, uh, one point, at least one point eight meters from the, away from the prop- property line.
On the, on the side, on your side.
On my side, on Thirty-Eight, yeah.
So there aren't any variances for side yard in this application, so yes, it is. We can let the applicant comment on exactly how far it is, but, um, but it's definitely meets the budget. There's no reduction in the side yard.
Mm-hmm. So I wonder, the, the deck at the back is a little bit closer, so it is, it is, uh, it's okay to have it, uh, so close, one po- less than one point eight.
I don't believe it is, but we'll let the applicant comment on that when he responds. Sorry, which side are you on?
The, uh, Thirty-Eight is, uh, east.
East side, okay. Alright, we'll check with him. He is listening. Um, any other comments?
Uh, no.
No, that's it? Okay, that is great. Thank you very much. We'll, if, there might be one other resident, and then we'll let the applicant respond to your questions, okay?
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Through you, uh, Madam Chair, there's no other residents?
Okay, fine. Alright, if we can get the applicant back on, and if you, I'm sure you heard the questions from the resident. He was asking about the east side yard and the, uh, I think it's the deck on the second floor, um, how close it is to the property line, and then what is the side yard setback on the east side?
Yeah, uh, hello again, Madam Chair. If we could ask the staff to bring up the same presentation, because we literally addressed that like much in a much more simple way. If you could go down, uh, there is a sort of a similar, like a, go to, yeah, this one, this one is a very good one. Yep, the, yes.
Perfect.
Um, so if you could zoom out a little bit, just do it through the context. So the number Thirty-Eight, the neighbor and the number Thirty-Eight that we just mentioned, they're south of the drawing. So as you can see, we are one point eight, and at the front, we're even three point two-three. So the answer is that no, we, we never get, in fact, we're, we're more than one point eight in many areas, but the closest we get at the corner of the jocks, because the, the angle we have to jog the building is, we get to one point eight. And then the second, uh, uh, point is that it's really not a second floor as we talk about. It's really just like the, the first floor, but answering the question, it's very far. It's probably like five, six meter away from, from the property line. So it's a quite a bit of setback to the, to the hats at the, at the, at the south. And then that is under no, had no objection, so, um, we should be good.
Can I comment on this?
Yes.
So, if you go to, let me see what the drawing number is. I mean, I, I think what the, the, uh, the neighbor is talking about is the, there's some sort of yoga pad with planters, and it's actually one point one-five from the property line. So.
Is it elevated, or is it on the?
Uh, I don't know. We'll have to ask the.
It is underground. It's on the basement, so it's not even above grade.
It's not above grade, okay, 'cause it's not, it's hard to tell from the drawing. Alright, so it's.
Yes, it is not even above grade.
Even if it's not above grade, it's still impacting that area. Uh, it's still a structure at one point fi- one-five away from the property line. But I'm not sure if it's not, I mean, it's, it's, is it steps going down? Or is it, uh, sort of like a hole in the ground here? Like, how do you get down to it?
Yes, it's, it's a step, uh, through you, Madam Chair, yes, it's, it's a walk-up basi- walkout, right? Walkout and walkup. It's really just basement and stuff going on. But just to clarify, the, the neighbor who's here today is a neighbor towards the south of this drawing. So this walk-up and everything we're looking at is the north of the drawing, which is, which is basically west side too.
I thought he was at Thirty-Eight. Am I wrong? He is.
Yes, they, they are, they are at Thirty-Eight, but Thirty-Eight is south of this drawing. It's on the east side. So the one that we're referring to on the back is on the west side. Uh, just let, give, give me a second. I just want to make sure that I'm correct.
No, Thirty-Eight.
Yes, I am correct.
No, it's on the east. Look at the location map.
The, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Thirty-Eight is, is o- on the property line that's got the one point five. That's all I'm saying. One point one-five. Whether it's acceptable, I don't know, 'cause it's, it's clearly not one point eight. So is it a variance? I don't know. Maybe not.
Yeah, the yoga is on.
Uh, no, we, yeah, through you, Madam Chair, this, this, what you have in front of you is that is a zoning review by the examiner. I believe because this is not like covered, it is a, just a walk-up. It doesn't have any cover or any, uh, it's just really a walk-up. Uh, it's there. It doesn't count as part of the setback, which at the shortest part, um, it is the one point oh-six, I believe, that we're looking at. But again, this is not a, this is not part of the one point eight meter setback. Like it, there is no wall, like this isn't underground. It's an opening, you know, basement walk-up.
Okay, but it would be appreciated if you could bring up drawings that show the full picture so that we don't have to sort of search them out ourselves.
Absolutely, yeah. The, the drawing that is on the, on the screen, I think, like, very clearly shows, uh, which is part of the submission. And, and obviously, we didn't know the question, um, that you would ask or the, or the neighbor would ask. So there wasn't a chance for us to prepare any sort of a presentation to address it. Obviously, there was, I apologize if it sounds like that, where there, there's no plan to hide anything. Like that's a, the, the drawing we submitted to the zoning, and then the notice is submitted to the committee.
Alright, food for thought. Mr. Fazali.
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, I have a question, uh, for the applicant. Let me, okay, so for the proposed main pedestrian entrance height, it's one point fifteen meters that you are asking. So are there any similar examples within your neighborhood?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. I, I even have prepared something. If we could go back to the presentation, um, can we go back to the present, to the next page, a next page? This one, yeah. To this one that is sort of a neighborhood, uh, si- no, not this one. The one that has a, like a site plan of the neighborhood, um, the, the page before this one, page, um, three, page three. Yeah, so this one, these are, these are the immediate that, that is like very recent. As you can see, number Thirty-Six, Kirkdale Crescent, which is literally very close. The approval was one point six-three. Ours is one and a half, so that one was one point six-three. And then if you look at the one in the Ripleton Road, um, it is for one point nine-eight, so almost two meter, uh, that was approved. So these are with the application numbers, as you could see, um, so ours is literally in a, in a much better shape comparing to both of them.
Alright, thank you so much. Alright, any other questions for the applicant? No? Let's take it into committee.
Through you, Madam Chair, um, yes, um, uh, I think I don't have any issues with the, with this application. Um, I've got the answer for my question, which actually the applicant presented earlier as well. Um, in regards to the main pedestrian entrance, um, there are no s- uh, side yard setbacks request here, which was pointed by the neighbor, so I'm satisfied on that as well. Therefore, um, uh, and the explanation about the third story was, uh, satisfaction as well. So, uh, I think that the application meets the fourth, in my opinion. Therefore, I forward a motion for approval of this application. There are no condition, if I'm not mistaken. Thank you.
I don't believe so. Alright, do we have a seconder? Mr. Kibu? All in favor of the application? That is three in favor, one opposed. Ms. Martin? Thank you. Uh, the application has been approved. And now we need a motion for.
Yes, I.
What do we call it, Mr. Secretary Treasurer? Apparently, we can't call it a German.
Yes.
Well, let's forward a motion. I'll forward a motion to ensure the hearing.
To end the meeting?
End the meeting.
Thank you. Um, do we need a seconder, Mr. Kibu? If we need one, all in favor, yes, of course. Thank you very much to staff for today, time, sorry, seven eleven P M. Alright, thank you, everyone, for your participation.